Joe Bob Dussman, Giltar, Larry Judd Pierce, P. Ward, George Terry Martin, we hold on behalf of the Black River Lodge.
Morris McRaven Trio, thank you all very much for coming down. Thank you, it was wonderful as always. Anita, you want to come up here and tell us about the Charlie Christian Jazz Festival, which is coming up, and that's really why we were serenaded this morning for just a few minutes, to kind of get people in the mood for what is truly one of Oklahoma's treasures. Anita, I'll just hand the mic to you, and you can do your best sales pitch about the Charlie Christian Jazz Festival.
I will do my best sales pitch. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everybody. This is the 27th Annual Charlie Christian International Music Festival, and we are so proud to have the city as one of our sponsors for the festival. This year, we're spreading it out a little bit, we're going wide. We have six big days of great music brought to you by 12 great bands, and most of them are local. We do have saxophonist Grady Nichols coming over from Tulsa to join us. It's going to be a great time for those of you that are interested, and you are all certainly invited to come. It's May 29 through June 3, and check us out at our website. It's charliechristian.org, charliechristian.org, and you'll get all the information, and y'all come and have a good time.
All right. Thank you. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you all, good luck. Thank you. We're going to get started this morning with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain Greg Giltner is here from the Oklahoma City Police Department to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Ed Shadid to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've blessed us with. Father, we're so very thankful for this council that meets, as you continue to watch over them. Father, we're appreciative today of what we've heard with this band. We're so very thankful for the God-given talents of such men and women who can play, who can sing, who can dance. Father, we're very thankful for our military, especially our Navy who's represented here today. We pray for their safety, pray for the safety of their families while they are away, and thankful for their service. We ask your presence to be within this meeting, and through your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is Navy Week. I'm going to ask all of the members of the Navy to come forward. I know we have Commander Baker and Chip Kilburn, who's the president of the Oklahoma City Navy League. You all will come up here. We have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it as we all get settled.
Whereas Greater Oklahoma City is honored to have the presence of the United States Navy in our community, whereas Oklahoma City has one of the most active Navy Leagues in the United States despite our landlocked location, whereas more than 1,300 active-duty sailors and 150 officers are stationed at Tinker Air Force Base to support the Tacamo mission with Navy's E-6B aircraft, and 400 active-duty and reserve sailors are assigned to 15 different reserve units at Navy Operational Support Center, Oklahoma City. Whereas more than 45 active-duty Navy recruiters are stationed throughout Oklahoma City, enlisting the best and the brightest our city has to offer. The citizens of this great city have a long history of supporting the crew of its namesake submarine, the USS Oklahoma City. Whereas the Ozarka River Wind, Oklahoma City Nationals Drag Boat Races will be the featured event during the 7th Annual OKC Navy Week, hosting sailors and their guests on the Oklahoma River from June 8 through June 10. Whereas the citizens of Oklahoma City wish to thank the men and women who serve in the United States Navy during OKC Navy Days, and whereas all sailors, past and present, connected to Oklahoma have served their country with honor. Now therefore, Met Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim June 4 through 10 as United States Navy Week in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to the Navy.
Thank you, thank you very much. I would tell you from the sailors represented here today how proud we are to be associated with Oklahoma City. Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you very much for recognizing this Navy. We are the greatest Navy in the history of the world, and I'll tell you, it's communities like this that keep us that way. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you to each and everyone. I had a chance to meet each of you in my office this morning, hear a little bit about where you're from, and it's a great cross-section of the entire United States, and we're grateful that you've chosen to be in Oklahoma City at this time in your lives. Thank you all for what you do.
Mayor, if I could for just a second, I had the privilege of going out and spending the night on a carrier a while back, and saw these people at work. And if the audience viewing this looks up there and think, "Man, there's an awful lot of young people up there," that's exactly what it is, and you'd be amazed at what our young men and women are doing in those jobs out there. And although I'm an old Air Force guy, I had a new respect for Navy White after I got through, so, well done. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you all one more time. The Oklahoma City Rotary Club helps us honor one Oklahoma City teacher every month, and Tanya Bell is our Rotary Teacher of the Month. Is Tanya here? Come on forward, it's great to see you all. Let's show our appreciation for our Teacher of the Month. Congratulations. We have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Tanya Bell has been named Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for May 2012. Whereas Tanya Bell teaches computer technology classes at Western Heights High School. Whereas Tanya Bell has been honored as a Western Heights High School 2011-2012 Building Teacher of the Year, and Western Heights Public Schools 2011-2012 District Teacher of the Year. Whereas Tanya Bell understands that a successful education system takes teamwork, and she actively supports a cooperative network among the community, school, staff, students, and parents. Whereas Tanya Bell knows her attitude, determination, and focus can be the difference between success and failure, and she understands that teaching requires not only patience and creativity, but the ability to pass along traditions that will help her students build character and integrity. William Butler Yeats said, "Education is not filling a pail, but lighting a fire." This describes Tanya. Whereas Tanya Bell conducts herself as a consummate professional and frequently pursues training to improve her teaching skills. She recently completed her master's in curriculum and instruction, and is a National Board Certified Teacher. Whereas Tanya Bell does not settle, but instead always looks for ways to update and improve her curriculum in her classes. Tanya puts into practice what Carl Rogers said, "The only person who is educated is the one who has learned how to learn and change." Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Tanya Bell on her selection as May 2012 Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now, the suspense is that we have to vote on this resolution. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it is unanimous. Congratulations. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Let's see, we've already voted on 3A. Item 3, B, C, and D are, well, B and C are appointments. Item D is a reappointment, and then Item E is to approve travel expenses for me to go to the Conference of Mayors event in July. Do we have a motion? Comments or questions on any of these items? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for May 15 and 22, and Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for May 1 and May 8. Comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to Item 5, this is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, several this morning. Starting on the consent docket on page 21, Item 7W, and that's the acceptance of the practice facility for the Thunder, and we'd like to strike that at this time. There's a couple of items left to finish on that, so we'll want to strike that, and we'll bring that back soon. And then moving to page 27, under Item 801, Item I, 1132 Northeast 17th, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. And Item O, 2140 Southwest 44th Street, we ask that that be stricken, there's a new owner. And then on to Item 8P1B, 1424 East Euclid, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D, 3101 South Goff, we ask that that be stricken, we need to rework for additional violations. Item I, 9609 North McKinley, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N, 1317 Northeast 7th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving on to page 28, Item O, 1841 Northwest 8th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We will rework for additional violations. Item U, 1,001 Northeast 17th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V, 1,005 Northeast 17th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item X, 3909 Northwest 19th, we ask that that be stricken. To rework for additional violations. Item FF, 1100 Southwest 43rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then if we move to page 31, under Items from Council, Item 10A, there's a ordinance supported by Councilman Sally, and she's asked that that be deferred until June 19.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
I have a comment on F1 and 2. These are two workers' compensation cases involving spinal surgery. Spinal surgery workers' comp leaves much to be desired, it's a very subjective field. I just want to point out that, I mean, there's a game that's played where the plaintiff's attorney hires someone to give an impairment rating, and then the city hires an attorney to give an impairment rating, and they're wildly different. In these two cases, the plaintiff's attorneys in the 52% and 54% range, and then our attorney is in the 14% and 12% range. And then the judge splits the difference, which is fine, that's the way the game is played. But when the plaintiff's attorney is coming up with numbers that are basically impossible, 50% impairment to the whole person, there's basically five categories. The highest category, the worst injury to the spine, would be in the 25% to 28% range. So when they're coming in with numbers like 54%, it's just unrealistic. And I understand, the other thing is that both of these involve a second surgery quickly after the first one, and what happens a lot of times in work comp cases is that surgeons go in and remove hardware, these screws and rods, that really the literature doesn't support, it adds cost to the case. This $50,000 a pop for each of these two cases is just for the disability rating, not for the cost of the health care, which we pay in addition to that. I understand as a sitting city councillor, I can't get involved in the management of these cases, but I would like to sit down with municipal councillor's office and review the policy as regards to these spinal surgery cases, which are common, there's several of them coming through, and I just think the impairment ratings are too high, and maybe we need to get more aggressive in speaking with the judges and trying to fight for a lower number. Even at what the judge is coming in at, in the 30s percent, this is among the highest ratings, and it's costing the taxpayer about $50,000 a case.
Yes, so I'll get with Workers' Comp Council, and also Diane Lewis, and maybe with Risk Management, and we'll set up a meeting to discuss that with you.
Thank you.
While we need, while I couldn't agree more that the, since we have problems there, I need to take a moment to respond to the fact that it was the plaintiff's attorney that did this. The fact is, it was the plaintiff's doctor that rated them that high, and the plaintiff's attorney just presented the evidence that the doctor. So as a doctor to a lawyer, you might understand my willingness to slice a hair here once in a while.
I have a real problem with these physicians who are coming up with numbers that I, I don't know the specifics of the case.
I just want to make sure we got the balance properly.
Absolutely. These are physicians who are generally hired by workers' compensation insurance companies who are coming in with numbers much higher than the physicians hired by the city.
All right, ready to vote, the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Mayor, Item C, again, that's NBA practice facility, and we ask that that be stricken.
All right. Item C stricken, how about a motion on the rest of it?
Yeah.
All right. Cast your votes on the other three items, and they passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, there's one item. All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT, and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk has pointed out to me, and as always, she's correct again, that I said on the deferral, on the striking of the NBA facility, I had said it was Item 6W, and it's in fact Item 7W.
Okay. Noted. Comments or questions on the consent docket?
Your Honor, I have a few minor questions on Z, zebra, AC, and AY.
Mayor, if I could, AT.
Yeah, Skip.
I have a question on B, U, W.
All right.
Sorry.
Larry?
B, U, and W.
Let's start with Pat.
Thank you, Your Honor. On Z, this is a building, some apartment buildings that have been added to the National Register of Historic Places, and I was curious if somebody could tell me what that really means to that building, restricted in any way as far as sales, remodeling, or whatnot? And does the owner have to be participating in this?
The owner requested it, I do know that.
Because I know, there have been instances, I think, where the owner found out about it when he read about it in the newspaper.
We try now not to do that anymore, Mr. Ryan.
But what, can you tell me what kind of restrictions this places on the property?
Basically, this allows them to be better eligible for the historic tax credits, that's the reason they have requested this.
And so far, Russell, as the restrictions that this might place on the building if somebody else bought it, for instance, as far as remodeling, does that impact this at all?
Those restrictions are essentially self-imposed in order to comply with the credit requirements. Otherwise, a national register nomination would not really limit your ability to develop the building.
Thank you, Russell. On AC, this is, deals with an agreement with the county to do some joint work. I think it's really important, it's a great resolution. I wonder, have we budgeted some money for this, or are we just going to try to take it out of the fly? Because we've had some projects, I know we've had to delay or put off because we didn't have any money to participate with the counties, and I wondered if we actually had budgeted money for this.
We actually are using, it's similar to Item 8D, which is the next one on your agenda as well for pottle repairs, but it's general fund, CIP, and street and alley, so we do have those budgeted to some level.
There's actually new money coming in the street and alley fund this year.
There's a limited balance that's available for us to do some improvements, but it would be out of the public works budget.
Thank you. All right. AY, this is a curiosity kind of question. We are accepting a donation from the Edmire Park Preservation for some entrance signs, and this apparently was not be quite enough, and the additional money will come from other departmental sources. And I was curious, does that mean city money is going into this sign?
Yes.
Now, is that our policy, that we will assist neighborhoods in putting in identifying signs?
Well, we've certainly done that in the past through our grant program. We certainly have a history of doing that.
So we have taken city money and participated in the construction of entrance signs for neighborhoods?
I believe we've done, we've done a number of those type of projects in neighborhoods in the past.
The two I'm familiar with, we've not participated in, I just wondered about.
If I may, regarding the sign, some time ago, an automobile hit the sign and damaged it beyond repair. We were about the work of repairing, pardon me, replacing the sign with a sign very much like the one that was there prior to the incident. The neighborhood asked if we would review a plan that they had for a different design of sign. We did. It costs additional funds, and they've donated those funds.
Okay. Wendell, does the city routinely repair signs that have been run over, or provide money for new signs?
Yes, we do.
So, and that is sort of a grant, the neighborhoods apply to the city for some help, is that the way that works?
It is, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask a quick question of the manager with regard to 6AT, and this is the resolution authorizing staff to issue and request to architects, engineers, and planners for a conceptual study of the convention center, and I was just curious from what department this would emanate. Does it come out of planning, or does it come from public works, or?
It's like we've done, it's like we've done all consultants for the MAPS 3 program, it'll come out of the MAPS 3 office.
Oh, comes out of the MAPS 3 office already, thank you.
Well, I mean, it's generated there, it goes through our standard professional recruitment process.
Great, but we have a wide and broad list again for this project.
Oh, absolutely. I met with engineers on it last week, or architects, I guess, in architectural firm, but they're coming in.
Great.
We'll have a very large.
This is one of these really important signature projects of MAPS 3, so, thank you very much.
All right, Skip.
Mayor, I had a couple of questions in reference to some of the consultant projects, and one was the, it's the Hurd Program under 6U, and this is to hire a consultant to provide statistical information concerning Plan OKC?
Councilman, that is a citizen survey. We do a general survey that looks for information from the general public on all the major issues that are contained within Plan OKC, to get an understanding from the general community about how they feel about the direction they want the city to take through the comprehensive plan. And that'll be informed by a number of the other consultant studies that we have going on now. When we begin to get that information, we'll start to wrap that into the questions, so we won't be doing the survey until towards the end of the year. So we'll need that information beforehand.
So we didn't already start obtaining that information prior to?
Well, there's some information we've been gathering, but we really need to get an understanding of how the community is going to respond to some of the major policy directions that will be established in the plan, whether they want to go this way or that way.
Okay.
It's a very standard part of doing comprehensive plan. We, you know, we've had the public meetings, but we haven't done a statistically significant survey of the general public as to their viewpoint on the elements contained in the plan.
Okay. Well, I think maybe B, since you're already here, may also be in your department, well, it is in your department, and that is the Green Roof Symposium. What is the green roof? I mean, are we?
Well, I think there's been, there's been increasing interest in trying to establish green roofs. Some of the new building projects that are going on downtown have included green roofs as part of their development. The money is being funded out of the EECBG grant, out of the Office of Sustainability, and we are partnering with the office, plane department is partnering with the Office of Sustainability to conduct this symposium, which is essentially an educational effort for the community, for people who are interested in doing green roofs. So Factor 110 are the firm that we use to assist us in event coordination, we use them for the Mayor's Roundtable and other such events. They provide a very good service, so.
Russell, this is funded by the Energy Block?
Yeah, EECBG.
So it's a grant that we applied for just to?
Well, this is, this is the EECBG grant, which we've had for a couple of years now, and, which is going away, but, but these are, this is an eligible activity under that grant, and I think is an innovative way to try and attract attention to, as I said, what is an emerging issue in the city. Jennifer, I'm sure I'd be happy to talk to you about green roofs in more detail.
Thank you, Jennifer, I'll wait and talk.
Just trying to provide another service to the community.
And the last one is 6X, and I think this just may be a typographical error, at least I hope, but, you know, we were in the Neighborhood Alliance on this strong neighborhoods initiatives, and the resolution states that it's Classen Tenpen, Gatewood, Classens North Highland, Lincoln Terrace, and Culberson East Highland. I don't recall Lincoln Terrace being one of the neighborhoods that were approved in the committee. Is this a, an overstatement in reference to one of the neighborhoods that is, was selected as the three, as far as Lincoln Terrace is concerned?
Well, the intent is not to do Lincoln Terrace, it's to address that area west of Lincoln.
Right.
And I'm not sure whether that's part of a specific name. I know it's a very complicated name for a, for an addition, but I don't know if, there's probably the official name for that addition. Our intent is not to go east of Lincoln, though, but that section there that is covered by Capitol Medical Zoning will still need to be involved in the discussions on how to move forward with the plan for Classens North Highland.
So you're saying Classen North Highland is, I mean, Lincoln Terrace will benefit as a result of Classen North Highland, is that what you said?
I don't, I don't think directly, not in terms of, we're not going to be putting the funding into there, but they'll certainly benefit by having a better-looking neighbor.
All right. And then the other part of that was this Culberson East Highland, on the city map, is this the way the, I mean, is that the defined area as Culberson's East Highland?
Well, each of these areas is really a subset of that predominant neighborhood addition name, but some of the, some of the geographic areas we've drawn actually cut into several different neighborhoods. We've chosen an area based on the demographics and the need, and what we consider to be the viability for revitalization of an area, so it cuts across some of the boundaries. But those are the predominant neighborhood names there.
Well, I would like to speak with someone in the planning department and get a clear definition as it relates to that boundary area, Northeast 16th Street, north of Callum, and Northeast 10th and Martin Luther King.
Yeah, we'll be happy to do that.
I think it's very confusing to the citizens as to what they have traditionally been identified as far as that neighborhood area and the geographics of it.
I understand that. We did not want to do the entire neighborhood, in each of these cases, we are not doing the entire neighborhood, and we didn't want to assign a new name to it to mitigate any further confusion.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Russell.
Sure. Larry?
Jim, if I could, some of these questions, I'd like you to help me out on as I go along. On AA, we're talking about seven projects that will have the roads resurfaced, and the way I read this is that all seven of these, including the two ad alternates, will be done.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, this, the monies for this came out of the $8 million that we approved last year from the general fund for additional street resurfacing.
Right, out of fund balance.
Out of fund balance.
And there were three bid packages, and this is the last of the third.
Right.
Part of the three.
And I'm very appreciative of that because these- And, and I'm very appreciative of that because these, a number of these happen to be in Ward Three. Now, if, and a big if, if we decide out of, out of, when this year comes to a conclusion that we might like to take some money out of fund balance again, we can take that money and direct it to use it for drainage projects, as Councilman Ryan suggested several weeks ago? And we could split this up with some projects in road resurfacing if in a ward that was more, more necessary.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then my next comment on that is should, if, big if that occurs, is there any way that, I guess I'm getting a little greedy, is there any way that we can speed up the implementation of these projects from?
Mr. Clowers and I had a conversation about that last week, that, that, you know, if this happens again. And we didn't make that decision until later in the year last year.
I understand.
So, that's why it, it took some time. But I, I did ask Mr. Clowers last week that if the council chooses to go forward with that, let's start looking at some streets and, and start, and start getting our plans in place to accommodate that.
Well, streets and drainage, because I think that was also mentioned. So, I want to make sure that my, my postuloness is to allow the ward to, if there's money available, let the ward councilmen decide where the money should go. And the speeding up of it, I think, would be very, very helpful, and our citizens would be grateful for that. Thank you, sir.
Well, I have a comment. I think Larry's made some good points, but I think that decision ought to be made in conjunction with the public works and the city councilmen involved, so that we don't destroy the idea of public works priorities in there. I, I, I think we, we need to avoid making this a purely political decision. It ought to be based on some engineering evaluation that the public works has done.
We always make recommendations based upon volumes and, and street grading conditions and such. And we will do that again this year, but then we also solicit council impact, or input as we go forward. Last year, one of the priorities got changed, and, and we can, we can certainly do that as we go forward.
I think we ought to, I think Pete could recollect some of the early issues when he was on the council the first time around, where these decisions were made on a purely political basis, and we didn't always spend the money in the right places. It appears that way, anyway. So, I just want to try to avoid that crap again.
Let me, may, clarify my point, so make sure that you know where I'm coming from, Pat. On street projects, my, 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 my comment was intended to go for the, taking the PCI ratings, is it PCI?
Yes, sir.
Ratings and using them as the basis in Ward Three. And I think the other councilmen do the same thing. And, but giving each council the, the approval, or the importance to take the facts, and if drainage was more important in your area and roads were more important in my area, to give us the freedom to do that kind of thing right there, again, based on engineering data, not just political things.
That's great. That's exactly the point I was trying to make.
I just wanted to clarify.
We are together on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ed?
A comment on AI. This is an ordinance set to be heard on June 12th. This is, and I'd just like to, to have a discussion about angled parking. And it's come up recently with the Better Block Project. This is establishing 45-degree front-end parking. Now, this is privately funded construction at a school, but I'd like to just start having a discussion about when, when and if we might be able to apply back-end angled parking in angles of this city. I think there are advantages to it, specifically when bicycles are in the area, when children are in the area, when disabled are in the area. And the next one is to have some parking spaces for the disabled. But you load and unload next to the curbside. You, you exit being able to see the street. You're not backing out into potentially children walking behind bicyclists. And I think that it's, there are some real advantages. We saw that in the Better Block Project at 7th and Hudson. Automobile alleys in particular has been, has been really working for this. They've spent some of their own money to do studies. This is an area that I think it could be applied successfully. It really, it just involves paint. I mean, it can be reversed. And so, I'd just like to begin to have a policy discussion about the advantages and disadvantages of back-end parking, specifically as it relates to automobile alley.
Councilman, I think we are talking about it on the side streets to begin with as a test. Doing it on Broadway with the level of traffic we have right now might be jumping a little too fast. So, I, I think we're going to work on some of those side streets, 7th, 8th, and 9th, and then see how it works before we move it on to such a heavily trafficked street.
I think that's, that's been the issue, but with, with traffic counts in the 11, 12, 13,000 per day range on Broadway, there are many, many examples throughout the country where you've used a, a center two, two-way left-turn lane, and then lanes to the side of that, and then back-end angled parking to the side of that. And it's worked very well in city after city after city with vehicle per day counts in the 10,000 to 15,000 per day range.
Well, it certainly is the historic way that people parked on Broadway.
Right.
We've seen all the great photographs.
Exactly.
But I've, we have, I think, reached agreement to go ahead and get it started on the side streets and use that as a little test zone, and then we'll try to move it forward.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
One final question on, also on AT, on the convention center. The, the language used is, is fairly matter-of-fact about a convention center hotel, which is fine. I'm just, I'm wondering about the convention center hotel study. Where, where are we with that in terms of timing? Have we?
We've not begun that at this point in time.
Any idea of when we might?
Now, it, it's a ways off yet. Or the whole commission center is a ways off yet, so.
But this, but this message, I mean, this document to designers basically says it's?
This is schematic design to take a look, that we could fit one in there if, if, if it's a desire to do so.
Okay.
Yeah, Skip?
Jim, it seems like that here recently, we're seeing more projects where we are engaging in a relationship with the county commissioners as it relates to some of our street projects. Is, I mean, the funding for the, the projects, are we providing basically the, the materials and they're providing the labor?
That's historically been the arrangement.
So, the, the, the list that's, that's listed in AC and AD and G, so the funding is already there for those projects? I mean, we have funding to, to?
Again, I think that came out of our street and alley fund. Eric, can you help me on that?
Let me separate the two into the two areas. So, if you look at AC and AD, these are streets that we maintain annually. This is a renewal of an agreement that we have with Oklahoma County. So, I would put AC and AD in one category of streets. But if you look at the list of other projects that are, that are on your agenda today, these are one-time projects that we're working very closely with, either, say, the City of Edmond or private developers or others, where it is a one-time fund. Those are coming out of bond funds in this case. So, we've sought the advice of Bond Advisory Council on bringing that forward to you today to consider funding those. But they're partnership projects. So, again, it's a county involvement. When you look at the labor and material costs, it's usually about 50/50. So, this is an opportunity for the city to receive the full benefit of a road at about half the cost.
So, this is something that we could, you know, be a little bit more proactive in reference to this relationship and as it relates to upgrading some of our, our streets then, right?
Yes. And I think you'll, you'll see there's a number of agreements that are on to your consideration today with, with, with generally, if you look at, let me find them here for you, but there's, there's three.
AG, the drainage issue, is that a partnership with, with the county?
A what? I'm sorry. A which letter?
G.
AG. No, the drainage, that's just coming out of simply either surplus bond funds or through interest proceeds on AG. But if you look at some of the others, hang on.
The one with Edmond?
The one with Edmond on northeast 150th, yes. That's one of the partnership projects, and that one's even more unique, not just with the county, but also with the City of Edmond. So, we've actually got a partnership with three entities in that case. But I guess to answer your question more directly, we are looking out towards the county, and we're actually looking out to other cities to make sure that we're partnering whenever possible to give the City of Oklahoma City the best bang for the buck. So, if we can find a street that we can find a partner on that's willing to participate in the cost, we're wanting to do those as, as a priority for Oklahoma City.
Thank you, Eric. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
[inaudible].
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence docket? All right, let's go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Five. It's an ABC issue at 10600 South Pennsylvania. David?
Thank you, your honor. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Will you name an address for the record, please?
My name is Dren Debra. I'm the owner of the location. The address is 1,000, I mean, 10,600 South Pennsylvania, Suite 10.
It has been recommended for approval. There's no dissension. Are there any, anyone speaking against it?
No one has signed up.
So, I would recommend that we approve this, and there's an emergency request associated with this.
All right. We have a motion to approve it and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Want to make a motion on the emergency? David?
Yes, sir. A motion for the emergency clause.
Cast your votes, and the emergency passes as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have several items from Ward Seven today on the planning docket. The first is at 1600 Southeast 29th Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential. It would become I2 moderate industrial. Skip?
Yes, this is a, it's a project. I haven't received any calls in reference to it, but I'm a little bit, just want to clarify, it says it was recommended from the planning commission, approved as amended. So, about has the amendment been corrected?
Yes.
And they have complied with the recommendations from the planning commission?
The, the original application included property to the south, so he deleted that property, and it's an expansion of that manufacturing building just to the west. So, he only included the area that he needed to do his expansion.
Okay. All right. Then I recommend that we pass it.
Any other comments or questions on item eight, A2? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, A3, is from Ward Eight at 2930 Northwest 162nd Street. It's currently a planned unit development. It would become a new planned unit development. Pat?
Your honor, thank you. The owner's representative, Dwight Butler, is in the audience. If we have any questions. This is a relatively minor change to an existing PUD, anticipated office buildings located in this particular area. Parking lots already in, matter of fact, it was put in with the original project. And there's, were no protesters at this, at the planning commission. Anybody sign up to speak on this?
No one has signed up to speak.
If we have any specific questions from the council, like I said, the owner's representative is here. Hearing now, I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight, A4. We're back in Ward Seven at 1804 Northeast 135th Street. It's currently a planned unit development. It would become a new planned unit development. Skip?
I recommend we pass it.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item eight, A4? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, A5, is also in Ward Seven at 243 Southeast 44th Street. It's currently R2 medium-low residential district, and it would become a simplified planned unit development district. Skip?
Pass it. Recommend we pass it.
All right. Motion and a second on item eight, A5. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, A6, is also in Ward Seven at 3535 North I-35 Service Road. It's R1 single-family residential, and it's also involving a simplified planned unit development district, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development district. Skip?
I haven't received any calls on this one either, so I recommend that we pass it.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Yes, sir. Are you in favor of this?
I, I am, your honor. I am the representatives, I am the representative, the advocate on this item, and respectfully request that we make this one an emergency as well.
All right. Let's vote on the item first, and then we'll, we'll talk about the emergency. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on item eight, A6. It passed unanimously. Skip, you want to?
Recommend the emergency.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the emergency. Comments or questions on that? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you for coming down. Item eight, A7, is in Ward Seven at 401 West Wiltshire Boulevard. It's currently a C3 community commercial district, and it would become a new spud. Skip?
Recommend we pass it.
Second.
All right. We have a cop, we have a motion and a second on item eight, A7. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight, B, is, let's see, a special permit to operate an automobile dealership in the C3 community commercial district in Ward Five. The address is 7800 South Chertel. David, it's in Ward Five?
Yes, sir. Thank you, your honor. This is a dealership that currently fronts I-240, and they're requesting approval to construct a detailed building as well as expand the dealership to the south. I know the owner's representative, Mr. Box, is here. Is there anyone here to speak against this item? It's been recommended by the planning commission. Any questions? I recommend this for approval, your honor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, B. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And, your honor, they've requested the emergency provision for this as well.
All right. We have a second on the emergency.
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes on the emergency, and it passes.
Thank you.
Item eight, C, is in Ward Seven. It's to close a portion of a utility easement on 164th Street. Skip, you okay with this?
Yes. Well, I do have just one minor question. I'd say minor, but it's, it's major as it relates to, I think, a lot of the drainage in that area. And this is to, to develop a Farstone Automotive Service Center.
That's correct.
At 164th and Western.
Yes.
And my only question, Bob, this is the area that we have been challenged as it relates to a lot of the drainage problems in the north part of the Chisholm Creek area. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or does it?
Yes.
Fight up to that? Will there be enough, you know, detention required in this area to try to prevent that additional concrete and water? I say, concrete, once the concrete gets there, it creates the additional water flow as it relates to that Chisholm Creek issue?
Yes. The detention or drainage will be looked at at the building permit stage, so that will be covered. They'll have to comply with our drainage ordinance.
Okay.
And these pieces are just easement that was platted that aren't needed now, and so that's why they're asking that they be eliminated.
Well, I'm, I'm sure this will be a, a great service for the citizens who reside in that area. Farstone in the past has done great projects that relates to their service centers, so I recommend that we pass it.
We have a second on item eight, C?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D, looks like it's been deferred until June 12th. Okay. On item 8E, this is a final hearing today, some changes to our animal welfare ordinance, so the council has seen this. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under either of the two items on 8E? Bob has some, some changes that we're going to be making on?
Well, this is, I mentioned it two weeks ago. We have to approve the amended ordinance. We deleted, we had a section stricken, and we're putting it back in.
I remember now. So we should vote on item 8E1 first?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, Bob, if I could ask just a couple of questions. In the write-up, the company the information talked about the Central Oklahoma Humane Society having, will go door-to-door when they pick up a community cat and tell the neighbors what they're doing.
Yes.
If the community does not want those cats put back in to their neighborhood, is there a provision for them to say, "We don't want X cat put back in"?
Yes, that notice that they'll provide on the doors will give them a number that they contact. If they contact and say they don't want those cats back, we'll either send them to a rescue, and they'll be relocated somewhere else, or we'll, they'll be euthanized. So that gives anybody an opportunity. When we, when we trap, really, when the Humane Society traps a cat, a feral cat, they'll have the opportunity to let us know if they have a problem in that area with their cats.
And also, down at the bottom, it talked about, it doesn't use the word "feral," but if there's a cat in the neighborhood that's causing a problem, a, an inconvenient, or whatever you want to call a problem, that can be trapped and handled the same way it is today.
Yes.
Not automatically be put back into the neighborhood.
Right. This is a separate program than that. If we receive a complaint, we'll, we'll give a neighbor a trap, and they can deal with the animal that way.
Thank you, sir.
So that's still in the ordinance.
Thank you.
All right, how about a motion then on item 8E1? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item 8E2 is the actual ordinance? All right?
We'd also request the emergency on this, so.
All right, thanks. Let's, voting on item 8E2. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item before we vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And the emergency?
Passed unanimously.
Cast your votes, and the emergency passes. On item 8F, this ordinance is also on for a final hearing. We have some, basically some minor changes to the motor vehicle ordinance. Any comments or questions here? How about a motion then?
Motion.
Comments or questions on item 8F? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing. This is the second time we've had an opportunity to look at this, and it has to do with revenue collections. Yeah, Russell?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. You.
We're not ready for 8H yet.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. You're just about 15 seconds ahead of yourself.
Russell, we really appreciate your aggressiveness, though.
All right, we're ready to vote on 8G? All right, cast your votes. 8G passed unanimously. Now, item 8H, and Russell is here for an explanation of this item that's being introduced today.
Deja vu. Scenic Rivers, as you know, occasionally we come back with modifications to our design ordinances. In the implementation of these, we run across situations that are determined either by staff, or by committee and commission members, or by applicants, where we try to improve the process. So our intent is to constantly stay on top of that, so that the ordinance is as relevant and as efficient and effective as it possibly can be. Have we got the, all right. Go to the next one? It's a new one. Can you do it? So, in terms of the changes that we made, we have incorporated a capacity for preliminary review. We always did this with each of the design committees and commissions. What we've done now is to formalize that, so that if anybody has got a complicated application that they want to take forward to the review body to get their initial impressions of it, so that they don't waste a lot of time with a design that's not going to be approved, then we provide that capacity for them to do that. We also have included in there supplemental guidelines. This is another tool that we've been using with each of the design committees, and this formalizes the process for adoption of those as well. Even though we have been using those, we've used those in several of the other design review processes, and the committees and commissions find this extremely helpful to them in terms of being able to make determinations on complex cases. We clarify when certificates of approval are required. In some cases, for example, for residential accessory buildings, we are not requiring a CA in those cases, so that is now enumerated in the ordinance, and we consolidate all the existing standards for residential uses there as well, so they're all consistent across each of the districts. We're modifying some of the uses in bulk standards. There are a couple of uses that were prohibited that will now become conditional, and then there is also a use that we're actually, will be prohibiting that is currently permitted as well, in just one of the districts, one of the sub-districts along the river. We're modifying the regulations and guidelines regarding landscaping, parking, and screening as well, trying to make those consistent between the different districts and in support of the different conditions that we have down on the river. And then new guidelines about urban form, character, and transition between uses. These are all, as I say, essentially cleanup and improvements to enhance the effectiveness of the ordinance. It has been, on the next one, it's been to the Riverfront Design Committee. We had a number of different workshops with each of the review bodies, with Riverfront Design, with Urban Development Committee. It was approved by the Planning Commission on May the 10th, recommended that this come through to the council, so it's here before you today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions for Russell? Yeah, Larry?
Russell, this is not directly, but on your first chart there with the Scenic River Overlay Design District that we have there, and it stops at Southwest 15th and Meridian?
Correct.
Okay. Has there been any discussion, I can't recollect any discussion, of extending that district up to Lake Overholser?
I don't think that the review bodies have ever thought about that. I mean, this, I mean, the overlay district covers that area that was part of the River Master Plan back six, seven years ago, maybe longer. So that only extended from Meridian over to Lincoln Eastern.
Should there be a need to do that? Where should it come? Should it come through the River Trust thing, or should it come through your department to look at that?
We'd be happy to take a recommendation from anybody to look at that. I know there's some hotel development on the west side of Meridian. That's not captured within the Scenic River Overlay, so.
Well, you have that, and you have the rebirth of Crystal Lake, which is going very, very well, and then you have the contract out to design the trail extension from Southwest 15th and Meridian up to Lake Overholser. So would you all consider this then as a suggestion? Do you take a look at that?
Yeah, we'll evaluate that and give you the pros and cons.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, David?
What, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Russell, would your committee be able to approve or recommend, say, temporary uses along the riverfront, you know, until more permanent development takes hold? Have you all been approached with respect to any type of temporary facilities, whether they be?
I'm not, not sure. Apparently not. And there may be some merit in that, because the redevelopment of the river is obviously going to take a long time.
Right.
And it's, I think it's feasible that some of those uses would be interim use until such time as the full potential of the river is realized. I know there's, there's one development down on the river that is currently contemplating an expansion, and, you know, that use is not now permitted within the Scenic River, but that use has been there for a long time, and is a valuable contributor to the Oklahoma economy. It should probably stay there until such time as there's other development around it that would require that it transition elsewhere.
Well, an example that I'm aware of is a city is allowing a drive-in movie theater to be put in place next to their river area that's, you know, going to be developed well into the future, and along with that, restaurants associated with that drive-in theater. But I was thinking you could have, I don't know if people still do this, but like miniature golf, and just other types of development activities that you may not want on a permanent basis, but until we see more permanent development take hold, some type of encouragement to get some activity down there. I think the more activity we have, people become more comfortable with utilizing the area and become, you know, just a sense of safeness and all that, so.
That's a good suggestion. We'll evaluate that.
Skip?
Russell, going to the east as far as the overlay, is there, the number of establishments that are presently in that area, with this overlay, would those establishments, of course, be grandfathered in? And it seems like that is, I mean, it's so heavily congested as far as the density of those light repair services that are already in existence in the area. I'm trying to figure out how is this going to make a major change in reference to the businesses that's already there?
Which area?
Are you talking, it's?
You're talking?
East of the Native American Cultural Center.
Right.
I mean, if it ever becomes what we want it to become, right?
Yes, unfortunately. Well, the Scenic River only extends essentially to MLK Eastern. There's a portion that goes over where the Indian Cultural Center owns that property there on the, on the east side, but other than that, we're not going east of 35 at this point.
So it won't go past east of Martin Luther King?
No, not at this point. Yeah, I would assume at some point in the future, we may put another dam out there in the long distant future, at which point in time we would need to evaluate that.
Okay.
But everything that is existing is grandfathered.
Your honor, one more question.
Yes, David?
You know, Russell, going back to the temporary use, if nothing else, maybe putting in, in connection with the Parks Department, more softball fields and just anything to get more people down there towards the river area. Again, I just think it's a hidden asset of the city, and the quicker we get people coming down there, and more people, I think people just naturally feel safer. So maybe the Parks Department could look, working with your committee in the Riverfront Development, to at least put temporary facilities down there.
We haven't had that demand. I mean, there was temporary soccer fields over there off Agnew, I think, and then, you know, we do have the softball fields at Wheeler Park, so I don't know that there's a demand beyond the existing provisions, but if there is, I mean, we certainly be willing to entertain that.
All right, just being introduced today. Have a motion? Comments or questions from anyone else? We're voting on item 8H. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is another item that's being introduced today, and Bob Teener is here to take us through this one.
Just briefly to explain this, there's a current trend of office developments coming in and sharing a common parking area and drive. This ordinance amendment will modify our zoning ordinance to allow them to establish their building setbacks at the plating stage. Right now, the zoning ordinance only recognizes setbacks from the property lines, and since you have a common area for parking in the middle, developers need to set, establish their setback from that, their lot line from that common area. So this ordinance amendment allows them to do that, modifies the zoning ordinance. Typically, they do it now through a PUD, where they establish their setbacks through the PUD process. This will allow them to just plat it and set the, establish the setbacks.
All right, item being introduced today.
If, when you have that situation where you have a number of buildings with a common area, will they establish the setbacks for all the buildings at once, or will they do it building by building as they go around?
They'll establish the setbacks when they plat it. They'll do all the lots at the same time.
All right, how about a motion? Voting on item 8I. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And again, a public hearing on this item for June 19th. Item 8J is another item being introduced today. This has been in the works for some time, but it's a new franchise agreement with Cox Communications, and Christie is here to lead us through it.
Right, and there are a couple of items here. There's item J, and there's item K, and then there's also a extension of the agreement, which is item L.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As you know, Oklahoma City has a franchise agreement with Cox Comm that are known as Cox Communication. Kind of a little history on our relationship with Cox. Cox was granted a 20-year franchise in 1991. This authorized them to use the city rights of ways to provide cable television service. The franchise was amended in September of 2007, when AT&amp;T entered the market. You may remember that. We extended the franchise for six months in December to give us more time to finalize the new agreement. And so you have three documents before you today. The first one is the ordinance, the new ordinance. The second one is the franchise agreement, and the third is a 45-day franchise extension. And we just needed a little bit more time to work out some of the details of franchise. That's why we needed the 45 days, and with any luck, it'll be adopted 30 days later. So, staff worked with Cox to negotiate in good faith and in the best interest of our residents. Most of our time was spent modernizing the language in the document to make sure it corresponded with federal law. Many of the conditions from the last agreement still apply to the current agreement, and just to boil it down, we will still receive a, Cox will continue collecting and remitting a 5% franchise fee. Cox agreed to continue providing video services to existing outlets in Oklahoma City buildings, and city buildings, libraries, and public schools. Cox agreed to continue providing access channels for 20 and Channel 18, which is OKC ETC, the education channel. And one other thing is Chapter 11 was renamed to broadband cable television, and that makes it more clear that this doesn't cover internet or phone services provided by Cox. The new agreement will be a five-year term rather than a 20-year term. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor?
Yeah, Pete?
Has, was any thought given to tightening the requirements for extension of service? You know, a relatively remote area of Oklahoma City, the only time I hear about Cox is because we don't have it.
Density requirements stayed the same, and they stayed the same because they are aligned with federal law. Kristen's here with Cox, if you have any questions.
So what we're doing, we just follow the federal law. There's no, we couldn't change that.
It continues to be 40 homes per cable mile.
Okay.
Christie, how does that compare nationally or with other Cox markets?
That's the same.
It's the same, okay. All right, this item being introduced today, and there'll be a public hearing June 12th.
Would it provide the opportunity for other cable services to come into Oklahoma City that aren't willing, that are willing to provide service at a lower density?
Yes. If other cable services are interested in coming to Oklahoma City, they can.
Okay. Now, like the cable service in Moore, they're willing to come into Oklahoma City already, and they, in fact, I think there may be an instance where they have come into Oklahoma City, to pick up customers. But that's acceptable for them?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, who wants to make a motion on this? We're voting on item 8J. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Yeah, 8K is part of the same thing. We have a motion and a second. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8L is an extension of the existing agreement. Because of the budget process and the cancellation of council meetings for the budget process, we need to extend our previous agreement with Cox just a few weeks to allow the new item to take place. We have a motion, and we have a second. All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. So that moves us to item 8M, which is an ordinance that's being introduced today. It has to do with downtown parking meters, and Debbie Holt's Claus here.
As they're getting set up and passing out the handouts, obviously, with the changes with Project 180, we've added a lot of parking spaces downtown, and so we've got new parking meters coming in, and so we've got to make some changes to the ordinance to accommodate those new parking meters. I know Meg is looking forward to that.
Good morning. Debbie Holt's Claus, Department of Public Transportation and Parking. The proposed amendment to the ordinance is, is Chapter 32, is to reflect the introduction and the use of the parking meters that will be replacing the old mechanical individual space meters. There we go. As you recall, about six weeks ago, council approved the purchase of the electronic multi-space meters, and one of the, this ordinance updates the language used. Because of the mechanical, it talked about the use of coins, depositing coins into the meters. So this one does allow for the credit cards. It just generically broadens the description of payment. And also, another difference between the mechanical meters and the new electronic meters is the way it displays the time. The electronic, I mean, the, excuse me, the mechanical meters displayed the time on the actual meter. With the new ones, they will be issued a receipt. The receipt will show the amount of time purchased, when it expires, and then they will place that on their dash in the vehicle. So, so basically, all the ordinance changes or the amendments is just to reflect the new meters.
And we think this will be a And we think this will be a lot easier for people that are, they struggle, they're a little scared of the new machine, making sure I got the right parking meter in and that kind of stuff. This eliminates a lot of that. You just go and buy how much time you want to, you buy, and you stick on your dashboard, and you get on down the road.
Yeah.
Yes, and as you can see on the slide, I mean, that's basically it. You insert your coin or a credit card, you print your receipt, take the receipt, and put it back on your car. And it's that simple.
When do we think these will be in place, Debbie?
We are expected to start the actual installation in about three weeks.
What sort of public outreach are we offering to get people more involved with the process?
We're working with downtown OKC and Public Information, the PIM office here. We will be doing some utility inserts, some video. I would also probably request, you know, Media Day, you know, Media Day, to get something out like that, too.
I think that's going to be important. And we're going to need some ongoing, you know, education on this. If you only come downtown once every six months, you know, things are new every time you come. Even if you've done it before, you may not quite remember the process. Putting a receipt in someone's car windshield, although I've seen this in other cities, is new to us. And I think we all need to remember that and try to communicate that in our neighborhood meetings as much as we can, especially to people that don't come downtown very often, because it's intimidating enough, and we need to make sure it's as friendly as possible. David?
Your honor, the only comment I would make is, you know, just make sure that the spaces are identified or marked as well as possible, even if it would allow us to paint on the curb right next to the spot what that space designation is. Sometimes I think with the electronic meters that we've had for a couple of years now, a common concern I've heard is, well, I'm not sure which space I'm parking in and all that.
But that doesn't matter at this point. You can park in any space, it doesn't matter, you don't have to worry about that. Now, you just, any spot you've got out there, you just pay for the time, and then your time will be on the ticket, and it doesn't matter, it doesn't have to correlate your parking space to the meter.
That's a great idea. We remove that barrier.
The only problem is for those of us that are terminally late, to have to go to the meter, get your, print your ticket, put it in your car dash. It does take a little extra time, so everybody needs to be prepared. It takes a couple of extra minutes to deal with it.
Yeah, Skip?
The proposed meter rates, or is this still open for discussion?
Talk about that in just one second.
Oh, okay. Well, then I'll leave it alone then.
All right, Debbie, I'm sorry, go ahead and continue with your report, and we'll save our questions and comments.
That's fine. And also, just to make a comment on the receipt, it does show and explains to the person that they need to put it on their front dash, and even has a picture of where they're to place the receipt. So we'll have that as well on the actual receipts. So that's basically Chapter 32, it's just allowing the use of the new electronic meters. Now, Chapter 60 is establishing the new parking meter zone, the proposed zone, with the one-hour and two-hour time limits. And what we've done is we've taken the area of Project 180, since that's the majority of where the meters were removed and were replacing, and asking that that would be established as the new zone. And as you'll see, in the pink area, which is defined by Robert S. Kerr on the north, Main Street on the south, and then Hudson on the west, and then E.K. Gaylord on the east, that is what we're defining as a one-hour time limit zone. And that also includes Harvey, Robinson, and Broadway. And then the rest of it would be a two-hour zone, which does include, on the north, Northwest Sixth Street, to the south, Reno, from the west, Lee Avenue, and then on the east, E.K. Gaylord.
Debbie, so the Memorial will be one hour?
No, will be two hours, yeah. The one hour is basically just right in, like around Leadership Square, Oklahoma Corporate Tower, in that area. And the reason for that is because of the businesses requested that, you know, they wanted that short term, and, you know, most of those are restaurants and retail, to where people could get in and get out, increasing their business as well.
Will it allow, though, for a car to be parked there, have their hour expire, and go back and put?
No. The ordinance is, and it always has been, for the time limit that you're, you pay for or you're at for one hour, that is it. You have to move your vehicle.
All right, comments or questions for Debbie?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
If now's a good time, I'd like to request that we at least do a compromise on the time in the central business district, because it's not just restaurants and retail establishments in that area. I'd like to at least extend that to 90 minutes instead of just an hour. Just my personal view and comments of people who come downtown for meetings, an hour really is difficult to meet, especially in light of the fact that they can't extend that. So I'd say at least 90 minutes, even in the core part of downtown.
Debbie, you want to go ahead with the meter rates?
Yeah, the proposed meter rates, increasing the parking meter rates was one of the recommendations by the Walker, the parking study that we recently completed. It's a broader strategy to encourage turnover in the cities on street parking, which will, again, we talked about the retail and restaurant. By raising the street, the, by raising the street meter rates, installing more meters, and improving the convenience and availability, then that does encourage, you know, the short-term, I'm sorry, the short-term parking is available, encouraging the longer-term parking to go to the parking garages. We worked with downtown OKC, other stakeholders, and the proposed rates was, what we're proposing is for 30 minutes, the 75 cents, 60 minutes, a dollar fifty, 90, 225, and then two hours for $3. We currently are at a dollar an hour is our current rate.
If I can respond, you know, if we had surplus parking or just an abundance of parking, I agree with that in theory, that, you know, people who are going to be coming downtown for meetings should go into parking garages. I'm all for that. But the fact is, we've got a shortage of parking spaces for people who just come down, you know, on a one-time basis. We cannot provide adequate parking currently in the core part of downtown. And so we have to look at alternatives, and that's why I'm suggesting we at least extend this to 90 minutes, if not two hours.
I guess that my question would be, does extending the time help increase more parking in downtown? It seems to me like that would reduce parking in downtown.
Well, at least it would provide a person who's planning to come down here for an hour meeting to get here a few minutes before, and if the meeting runs a few minutes late, they still are within that 90-minute timeframe. And since they can't run down or have somebody run down for them and extend that parking time legally, I just think it puts them in a difficult situation.
Yeah, okay. Larry, I'm sorry. Let's let Debbie finish, Larry.
If I may.
I'm sorry. I keep interrupting her, I'm not blaming anyone but me, but let's let her finish, and then we'll.
If I may. The only, the only zone that we have, we're requesting for the one hour is the area highlighted in the pink. The rest of it, the majority of it, will be two hours, which is more than some of it around this area now. So, for example, around City Hall, up through the Memorial, up down to through Marriott Gardens, all of that is two hours, a maximum two hours.
And so Debbie, going east, I'm sorry. Going east to Broadway, I'm thinking specifically about Tuesday Rotary meetings, where we've had a big issue for a long time. Will Broadway in front of the Chase Tower and all the Skirvin parking, will that be two hours?
No, that's, that's one hour right now.
It's going to be one hour.
And that proposed one hour, from Main to Kerr on Broadway, yeah. But if you were to park on north of Kerr, then it would be two hours, just depending on you.
Okay, and there's, it tends to be more parking up there anyway. So that does drive folks to, okay, thank you.
Okay, the last proposed that we have is on the meter hoodings. Currently, we do meter hoodings for construction, repair, maintenance, special events, anything like that that disrupts the flow of traffic and for the benefit of public safety. We currently charge $10 per meter. What we're asking is that we can charge 35 administrative fee, and basically, that's just for staff to go out and do it. We take the request, we have a staff person that goes out and hoods the meters, comes back and takes the hoods off, and then we do billing and all of that. And with that, that is now the end of my presentation.
All right, Larry?
I thought what you said during your presentation, that downtown OKC has looked at these different fees and the way you've got the pink area for one zone and the other zones, and based on their input, they're in accord that this is a good reasonable way to start with the fees that you've outlined?
Yes. The majority of these in that area are one hour already. What we were trying to do was establish, because with the current time limits that we have, like on Reno, we had some over there by Marriott Gardens that were five-hour meters. We were trying to establish some kind of a, you know, a zone for the one hour, and then have the majority of them two hours, and that's basically what we were doing. We haven't really changed it that much, we've just defined it and clarified it a little more.
And then somebody who wants a few more hours than that should go, like, to the Cox Center or to the Santa Fe Plaza or something like that to park for a longer period of time.
That's the intent.
And one of our, one of our things I think we're trying to do here is to provide ample, all the parking that anybody would ever want, right at your front door, and yet on the other side of the coin, Dr. Ed is trying to promote walkability. We're trying to, you know, you may have to walk a couple of blocks to park at the rates you want. Thank you, Debbie.
Gary?
I've got a couple of logistical questions. The credit, use of credit card, will there be any kind of a fee on that?
No.
Only if the bank or the issuer has a fee?
Well, let me back up. There's no fee to the actual user, the citizen, but the city will be paying our current credit card rates.
Okay.
And that's why we have the 75 cent minimum.
So if a person puts a card in for 75 cents, 75 cents is what they're going to see on their credit card bill?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a way to, let me back up, are the parking enforcement people only going to go by the receipt on the dash, or is there also a reading on the unit itself that they'll go check before they write the ticket?
No, it will be on the dash only.
Only?
And that's why we put it on the driver's side. And we also have an option of, there's a sticky back where we can actually, they can stick the receipt onto the windshield or lay it on the dash to where it could be read.
If, if I pull up and park in space number three and I go to the machine, is there a way for me to tell whether space three has any time left on it or not?
There's no more space number three, sir. There are no, it's just a generic, it's all based upon the ticket.
So you're not paying by space?
No.
You're paying, you're paying for the time that you're using it. And one of the benefits of using...
That's sticky.
One of the benefits...
I can't tell you how many times I pulled up, and if I only had to run in and get something if there was 15 minutes left on it, I thought, good, I got 15 minutes left on that one.
We prefer the term strategic.
I understand, yeah. You're going to get my 75 cents whether I like it or not, is that what you're saying?
Well, and the benefit of the receipt is also, since you're not paying for that actual space, your purchasing time is that you can take that receipt somewhere else, and if you still have time available, you can still use it.
Oh, okay.
There's trade-offs.
All right, any other comments and questions for Debbie?
One question, how much revenue is generated annually by parking meters?
I'm sorry?
Amount of revenue generated annually by parking.
Well, that's very difficult. This last year, we haven't had many meters on there, but normally, it's about $900,000, which all goes into the general.
And that does not include fines, right? That's just for...
That's just meter revenue.
Yeah, Skip?
So does this increase the penalty for over-parking?
No. This is just the actual rates for how much it costs to park on the street.
My question then about this hoodie, the...
Hoodie?
The meter hoods. As it stands right now, a business can hood certain meters for, is it $10?
Yes.
For all day?
Yes.
$10 per meter?
Per meter.
Right.
Right.
Is there a limit?
How many can they hood at one time?
No, but we look at the reason. I mean, we don't let just anyone come and hood a meter. It normally, like I said, it has to be for construction. Let's say a business is moving and they need to bring in a moving van to park right there in front. There's various reasons when it's approved. Now, for, it's not made for a convenient parking space.
Well, I understand, but it just seems like that sometimes when you come downtown, that, you know, there's no other parking there at all, but these meters are hooded, and you kind of wonder which business and for what purpose do these, do they have them hooded for?
Right. Well, we're also hoping that the $35 administrative fee might kind of slow that down a little bit.
So we'll change from $10 per meter to $35 per meter?
No, we will still charge the $10 per day per meter, but we're charging an administrative fee of $35 for the request.
We can't stand up.
Correct.
Debbie, I noticed this morning that there are hoods on the meters out in front of the library where the Spokeys bikes are. Are those meters going to come out, or are we just going to continue to keep them hooded? How are we going to deal with?
No, I believe those are hooded because of the traffic and the construction for the turn lane, and that was why those were hooded.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. Item just being introduced today, but how about a motion to do so?
Second.
Cast. Yeah, we're doing M. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item 8N is a related matter. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
One designated the areas, the other one designated the fees.
Item 8O is a list of dilapidated structures. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8O? Yes, come forward, please.
I hope I'm doing this right, I'm not...
Well, we'll find out. Good morning, and if you'll lower your microphone.
I'm so nervous.
That's okay, don't be nervous, but give us your name and address for the record.
Let me pick my stuff up.
Okay.
My name is Debbie Mosley, and the address I'm talking about is 529 Northwest 97.
Okay, that's in Ward 7.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've owned this property for over 50 years, and my brother passed away recently. He made a huge mess, and I've been working over there ever since he's passed, and I'm just wanting to know, can I have more time? I've had two dumpsters over there, I've had, like, trucks and trailers three different times. People have helped me, and every five to seven days, I'm over there mowing.
Okay.
Like I said, this is what I have to deal with.
Yeah, okay, well, let's, let me, let Councilman Kelly chime in here.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mosley, this looks like it's a, is there a house on the property?
There is a house, sir.
Where's the house?
Right there, right there. That's it. And like I said, I boarded up the windows, you can see the lawn, I tried to keep the front yard done. How they've gotten, you know, I know there's a mess, but there is a private sea fence there. I'm not exactly sure how anybody got in the back to do that, because I've been myself, and I've had some people help me, I've paid some people. When I was there this past summer, I was by myself, and a spider bit my face and, like...
No, I understand, you're doing a lot, and we appreciate that. We also have to look after your neighbors and the neighborhood itself, and I think that's Councilman Kelly's concern. It's certainly not directed at you specifically.
Is your plans, I mean, are your plans to rehabilitate the property for use, or...
I think that unless I get some help with someone, like I said, my brother has some cars there. I've been trying to get the cars cleared out. I've got rid of five different cars. I probably got six more to go. I've called pull apart, and at one time, I even called the fire department to see if it might be a training house, but because it's close to the neighbors, I think they didn't think that might be a good idea. But no, I continue to work and do it. I'm just needing time, like I said. I would have never guessed that I would be put in this situation, and I know my brother didn't intend this, but I think he was like a hoarder, and I closed my eyes, and by the time I opened them, I have this, and I'm working, like I said, oh, you know, every week, I'm over there, and sometimes more than, you know, once or twice, you know, I, I still work, I watch my grandkids, you know, I continue, and I will do the house. You know, I'm trying to figure out whether to sell the whole property. I've got 16 mods here, so it's a little bit of a land, and...
Well, Ms. Mosley, I, we...
Well, Ms. Mosley, I, we truly believe that you are doing everything that you can do in order to try to address this issue. Unfortunately, many families fall prey to these type of situations, and of course, you didn't know. And I believe that Mr. Locke is more than willing to work with you. It sounds like that you're just trying to do whatever you can to clear the bad off of the property. And ultimately, I don't know what you want to do with it after that, but, you know, we do have these issues that we have to enforce as it relates to the structure for safety of everyone. So, Charles, I don't have any problems if you could, Ms. Mosley, if you could stay in touch with Mr. Locke and inform him of what your progress is as it relates to...
Oh, yes, sir.
To cleaning the property up. Charles, is there any major problems with that with you?
No, we can work with her and give her some options depending on which way she'd, you know, tear it down or try to rehab it.
Okay, all right.
I would look for direction from him about the part that concerns us the most.
Okay.
And as long as you're working on it, you're probably not going to have an issue with us.
Okay.
But really, stay in touch with Charles and his staff about addressing it and moving forward on it. We wish you luck.
Okay.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
Anybody else here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight O on dilapidated structures? Yes, sir, come forward.
2821 Reilly Avenue in Newella.
All right, and I will need your name and address.
Ricky Charles Wood.
All right. And this property is in Ward four, Pete?
I'm sorry?
I was explaining to Councilman White that this is, property is in his ward.
There's seven children after my mother died, and we just left it to each one of his children. And I'm having, I was having trouble getting my brothers and sisters to help pay the taxes on it. I lived there 11 years after my mother passed away and took care of it and kept it mowed and paid taxes on it. And then I moved off and had my other brother move in there, and he passed away mowing it. And I'm just wondering if, since I lived there 11 years after my mother passed away and took care of it and paid taxes on it, if it's mine now or... The only thing I have to do with it is to probably cut it up for sale. And our, we, my different nieces have contacted Newella Fire Department about having a controlled training burn on the property, but they need, I think, the Oklahoma permission from this council to do so.
All right.
To do a controlled burn.
Let's hear what Councilman White has to say.
Well, if the fire department could use it for a controlled burn, that's a good thought.
Yeah, we'll just clear off some of it, though.
Yeah, the question about whether the house is yours or not is something you need to talk to a lawyer about.
Okay.
There is a possibility that you might have a claim, but it's a complicated thing because the house was in your mother's name when she passed away.
Yes, my mother and my father, I think only...
Well, see, in order to really clear the title, you've got a couple of legal proceedings you would have to go through in order to clear the title.
I probably need to contact a lawyer and see about selling the property.
But in terms of, and you probably need to contact an attorney before you move forward because there are, if you had, you have six brothers and sisters.
Yes, sir.
Until your, until their claims are resolved, you, no one has the authority to give the fire department the authority to go ahead and burn it.
So I need to go through probate court then?
So you, well, at least you need to talk to somebody about how, I'm not saying you need to go to probate because I don't know enough about it, but it sounds like you do. But I...
I've just come from the probate court office down there, and they told me I need to take it through, go get an attorney and go through probate.
I think you probably need to at least have a conversation.
I've had two brothers and a sister.
But your problem is, the kind of decision you want made, I don't believe that there's anybody can make that decision. Because with the title being what it is, I don't believe the fire department's going to sign off on doing a controlled burn there without having a clear title to the property.
Yeah, I want you to do that.
So something, I mean, they're going to have to know who owns it before they torch it. So you really have to, we can leave it on and give you a little bit of time. If you'll work with Charles, as you heard a moment ago, if you'll work with Charles, he'll work with you. But the house needs to be torn down from the pictures. There's no, very, very little to salvage there. The idea of doing it with a fire is probably cheaper than, and then having somebody come in with a dozer and clean up the debris is probably easier than pushing it over. But you really need to do something.
Some of my nieces has been on the site and have been doing some cleanup and some teardown of one shed. They've, we've already started doing some work on the property.
I think we need to leave it on there to be sure that something's moving forward. But we have, you have 30 days before he issues the demolition order, and if he's, if you've either filed a probate or come up with another conclusion, I think he'll probably work with you.
All right, thank you.
He's standing with you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else here to wish, wishing to speak under item, under eight O dilapidated structures? All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote the remainder of the docket. Passed unanimously. Item eight P is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight P? All right, cast your votes on eight P and pass unanimously. Item eight Q is for revocable permit to hold the Collegiate Wakeboard National Championships on the Oklahoma River. This event goes through wards four, six, and seven. Is there anyone here representing this event here today? If you'll give us your name and address?
Roger Schkeen, 3216 Windsor Terrace.
And I'll give you a few seconds to promote your event if you'd like.
Yes, sir. This will be the Collegiate Nationals. Colleges from all over the country will be coming in. CBS will be airing this event via the Alt Games, and it'll be aired, I think, in July on the cable channel and then in October, November on CBS, and then throughout the year on the regular CBS sports channels.
All right. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from council on this item?
Roger, where's your, the, the wakeboard, your new project, or are you still going forth with it?
Yeah, we are at the finish line on the Wakeboard Cable Park at 3501 Northeast 10th Street. And the Collegiate Nationals will be held on the Oklahoma River. The Cable Nationals will be at our new location at 3501 Northeast 10th Street, and that'll be Sunday, June the 3rd.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, how about a motion?
Move it.
Okay, we're voting on item eight Q. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight R, a request for revocable rights-of-way permits. The first is to hold the 2012 Riley's Run in Ward seven. Is there anyone here on this item? Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mary Catherine Sexton, 10317 Timber Valley Drive.
All right, and tell us about this event.
We are requesting to do a 5K run and one-mile fun run on June 16th out at Oakdale School. It's on Huffner near Sooner Road, and it's going to start at 8:00 AM, and then the fun run will be at 9:00 AM. And then we're going to have a fun zone for kids afterward that goes until about 11:00.
Sounds great. Skip, you okay with this?
Yes, I've received several calls. Mr. Ken Stoner, who's very involved in the organization of this project, and it is for a great, you know, need for one particular person and, of course, for other children who are suffering from this disorder. And so I fully support the project.
All right, how about a second then? Cast your votes on item eight R one. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight R two is for Wet Earth. Meg?
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here wanting to speak about Wet Earth? It's a fantastic, a couple of days in downtown Oklahoma City, and the parade is scheduled for Friday, June 8th. I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes on item eight R two. Passed unanimously. Item eight S is an agreement to help us assemble some property around the Cord Ashore Park area, and Kathy O'Connor is here to explain exactly what this would accomplish.
Good morning. We just wanted to give you a little bit of background about this agreement and the opportunity to answer any questions you might have about it. First of all, just as some kind of history and a reminder of where we are on the Cord Ashore process, in 2007, the city council approved or heard presentations about the Cord Ashore Framework Plan, and that plan was actually accepted by the city council in 2008. Also, if you recall, in the 2007 general obligation bond issue, we included a project in the park's proposition to acquire the old main post office building, which was for sale at the time, because we recognized that the Cord Ashore Plan called for the implementation of a park south of the Boulevard, and that acquiring that property would be a good step in the right direction towards implementing that park. The framework plan talked a lot about implementation and the need to strategically acquire property adjacent to the park to make sure that the right kind of private development happens to ensure the success of the park. So in December of 2008, council approved the allocation of $5 million in funds from Tax Increment Financing District Number Two, which is the downtown TIF district. 2.6 million of that was used to acquire property in the area by the Economic Development Trust, including the former Goodwill site. Again, it was another location that Goodwill had expressed an interest in selling and relocating to a larger facility, so we were able to help accommodate that nonprofit in that move. In December 2009, Maps Three was approved by the citizens, and again, it included the large Central Park or the large park project south of the Boulevard. In order to implement Cord Ashore further and to take the necessary steps to make sure that implementation progressed in an orderly fashion, the city council approved the Cord Ashore Urban Renewal Plan in March 2010, and it established the Cord Ashore Urban Redevelopment Area. Just as a little bit of background information again, also in 2010, council directed the Urban Renewal Authority to begin acquisition of property for the Maps Three Park. And this is a map of that acquisition that we've been doing for the city since 2010. As you can see, probably about 95% of the park is either under contract or acquired or we have made offers. So we're making very good progress on acquiring the property for the north part of the park. If you remember, as a part of that agreement, we also told the city council, the city council asked us to not begin acquisition for the South Park until 2014.
Before you leave that comment, Kathy, with the amount of property in the North Park acquired, is it time that we should start, should we release you before 2014 to start buying the South Park?
I think that's up to you, and if the council would like us to bring something forward to that, you know, for that, we can do that. I will tell you, there are people that are in the area of the South Park that have expressed an interest in selling, so that might be something that we want to begin to look at.
I don't know if that's a good deal or a bad deal, but I think that if we've got that much of the North Park done, it's not going to get any cheaper on the South Side down there, so do we want to start looking at buying land down there?
Your honor?
Yeah, David?
I'd take that a step further. If you look at the map, you know how we've got kind of an L shape as far as the land that'll be utilized for the park south of the current or the new I-40? I would just ask that we look at where we will be 20 years from now, and I would suspect that that property on the south part of I-40 will have grown perhaps even more important since it runs along the river than the area north of it. So I wouldn't be too short-sighted and just restrict ourselves to that one block area. I would suggest we at least think in terms of holding open a two-block area like it is on the north part of I-40, because I've just got to believe that will be a great park 20-plus years from now. You know, some people may say that area looks a little rough right now. I drive by it quite a bit. It probably does. I mean, there's a lot of dogs running around there loose, but it's a great area. I think it's only going to get better, and I would encourage, just like Gary suggested, to begin acquiring the property now. But to the extent funds become available, try to extend that to a two-block width all the way down to the river, because I think as we move forward, that property's only going to become more valuable, especially along the river.
Just as a reminder and to go through this map a little bit, the area in green is the area that was designated as a park in Maps Three. And the top of the upside-down L that runs around, along the new alignment of I-40 was acquired by ODOT as a part of the right-of-way acquisition for the highway project. So that's already been acquired by ODOT. The Maps Three budget for the park only includes sufficient funds to purchase the property that's in green. So we would have to be very careful about what's budgeted in Maps Three for land acquisition if we were to look at expanding the boundaries any. The area outlined in red is the urban renewal area boundary. The area outlined in blue is called the land acquisition area, which was approved as a part of the urban renewal plan. And as you can see, when that plan was adopted in 2010, it designated an area outside of the park for acquisition, and that acquisition was for private redevelopment. Because from, you know, the adoption of the Cord Ashore Framework Plan through the urban renewal plan, city council recognized that the success of the park depended upon the kind of private development that took place next to it. And one way to influence development is to acquire key parcels adjacent to the park. So, as I mentioned, we've already acquired Goodwill, and the agreement that's presented to you today is kind of the next step in the process so that we have the tools on hand that we need should other parcels become available that we can purchase. So to kind of get to the agreement...
Let me make a comment on the South Park before you go forward. If there are funds available, I think, and people are willing sellers, I think it's something worth looking at. But it's my understanding that there's a survey going on right now concerning what physical assets are in the park or in that take area. And what I don't want to see repeated is what happened in the Harrison Walnut area when the expressway went through, where a whole historic neighborhood was just uprooted and never was the promises that were, at least in this case, we haven't made any promises. We just said, "We're going to take it." If you look back in the 80s or the 70s, when Harrison Walnut came through, we just took it, and we promised them we'd do all kinds of things, and we didn't do any of them. And I know that's probably, I'm given to some hyperbole, as you know, but we didn't do what, in my view, we didn't do what we promised we'd do. We didn't do what people's expect, we had expectations that weren't fulfilled. That may be a better way to put it. Barry would have said it that way. But what I don't want to do is, I don't want to start with the acquisition until the survey of the assets, the inventory that's being done is completed. Because I think there's a way, for example, to save Riverside School, I know it's not in the take area, but it is, but it is certainly something that was historic center, it and Little Flower Church were the historic center of the original Hispanic community in Oklahoma City. And I want to, I want to try to find a way to be sensitive to that. Manuel Perez Park, Medal of Honor winner from Oklahoma City, is there. I think the trail that goes through to, from the river to the, to the kind of a point on the Boulevard needs to go through Manuel Perez Park and needs to honor that. There's some other buildings in there that we ought to try to, I just don't want to throw away the historical significance of that area, because that was, as I said earlier, that was Hispanic Oklahoma City before, before the Hispanics were felt comfortable in moving into a broader area. That's where it was concentrated. And I would like to be sure that we are sensitive in that south area to those things. I mean, it's also got other reputations. I mean, there's Hubcap Alley also, where people took all the hubcaps they stole and put them out for sale there on Robinson, but, and I'm not sure that's worth preserving. But I don't want to be insensitive to that historic Hispanic connection between that part of Oklahoma City.
It certainly was part of the Cord Ashore Plan that we recognize those historic assets like Riverside School and Little Flower Church. like Riverside School and Little Flower Church. As you mentioned, it isn't in the acquisition area, those facilities aren't, but we will make sure that we work very closely with the Planning Department in the city to make sure we have a clear understanding of what that inventory is and take those structures into consideration if they're in any of the property that we acquire.
You know, how we handled the surrounding property, though, will say a lot about whether or not we're able to preserve Riverside School and whether we're able to, what we're able to do with Manuel Perez Park, and I just want to be sensitive about it, because I meet with, on a regular basis, with a lot of older, my age, older Hispanic people that lived in those neighborhoods when they were younger. And it's, it has a very important sentimental attachment to them, and they have a reunion on about an annual or biannual basis in the park, kind of a homecoming reunion there at Manuel Perez Park, it's not very well publicized, but it has happened on occasion. And I don't want to see something that taken away so that we don't have the ability to continue to honor those.
I agree with everything you said, Peter. My comment was only such that I don't think we ought to have to wait two more years to start acquiring property if we have willing sellers down there, willing sellers.
No, I agree, and some people have recognized that this is coming, and they vacated their properties, and they're just there, they're vacant property. There's no, there's no historical connection at all, and those, we ought to go get those. But I just want to be sensitive as we move forward to the real significance of that small neighborhood there.
But Russell just mentioned that that survey will be completed in September, so
Okay, I knew it was coming.
We'll work with the city and make sure that we understand that.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Kathy? Larry and then Ed.
Kathy, on the area in green that shows up there, are there not one or more property owners who we have a contractual agreement with that we agree not to take their property until X time out into the future?
No, the only, the only mention of the date is in the resolution that Council approved, approving the land acquisition plan.
So we also, but we do have specific agreements with some of the, when we purchased it, that we're releasing back the property to them where there's
Right, yeah, so I thought he meant something.
We'll take possession.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, we do have agreements with some of the property we purchased, and we've leased it back to them to use until we absolutely have to have it, so.
Salvation Army falls.
I didn't understand your question, sorry.
... that we won't be down there impressing people before 2014.
That was, we don't have agreements with those folks, that was a policy, that was a policy statement made by those party.
We have a verbal commitment with them to do that, right, some of our people.
And those are all in the North Park area, not South, so.
Ed? I just want to make sure I understand, the 2.66 million that's already been spent is for land within the park area or outside, or both?
It was spent on land outside the park area.
All, so none has been spent?
None of it's in the park.
So then you've got roughly
Goodwill is
Goodwill was the majority.
Is a big part of that.
Okay, and then you've got roughly 18.4 million for the North Park, 13.4 million for the South Park, which is completely separate.
Okay, those, that's the land acquisition budget in Maps Three?
Right, within the park.
I can't recall the exact numbers that are in the Maps Three budget, but.
And then just to remind, the scheduled, under the Maps Three timeline, the scheduled commencement of construction in the North Park is second quarter 2013?
I don't recall it specifically. Mike Mize is here, can you help us on some?
Roughly nine months from now. Wait, the commencement?
Well, actually, there's a small portion of the North Park construction that will begin before 2014.
What, second quarter 2013, I thought, was the?
That may be, that may be the exact start date, yes.
So all your land acquisition in the North Park has to be completed in the next nine months?
Well, all the land acquisition in the areas that we would do construction in.
Okay, all right, so, thank you.
So to go on, the agreement that's before you today is between the Economic Development Trust, the city, and the Urban Renewal Authority. The Economic Development Trust approved the agreement at its last meeting. The agreement calls for the Economic Development Trust to allocate the remaining $2.34 million that was originally allocated by the TIF Review Committee for land acquisition in the Corda Shore area to the Urban Renewal Authority. The term of the agreement is three years. As a part of the agreement, there is a 5% program administration and redevelopment services fee that will be paid to the Urban Renewal Authority. That totals $117,000, and it will be paid out over the three-year period. I anticipate that it will not take us three years to spend $2.3 million, so we will spend that money much more quickly than that, and, but there will be continuing redevelopment services associated with the, with the private development of that property that will take place over that three-year period. As a part of the agreement, it does state that Urban Renewal can sell the property for redevelopment purposes, but that the proceeds transfer back to the Economic Development Trust, or the Economic Development Trust can approve the use of those TIF funds for other redevelopment purposes in that area, including the acquisition of other land, for example. I think it's important for us all to remember that the Corda Shore Plan is a very long-term plan, and we could be working on redevelopment in that area for the next decade, I would anticipate, so. That's all I have.
Yeah, Ed?
Well, on page 10, under Program Administrative Services, I mean, you outline fees for legal services, land acquisition services, basically what that 5% is going, there's nothing in the agreement about appraisals or appraisal costs?
Those are mentioned in the agreement, there's a list of services that are a part of the actual acquisition cost. On my agreement, it's page nine, there's a list of items, Items A through G, that include relocation services, title services, appraisal services. All of those kinds of things are a part of the land acquisition cost itself.
Under commitments of Okura, okay, can you talk about appraisal, because the, I guess, I remain concerned by that vitograph property transfer. If you, if you look in the county assessor's site today, it still says that property was purchased for $6.9 million. There's no asterisk, it doesn't say that the Economic Development Trust appraisal was $4.4 million, or that the city wasn't, so can you talk about how we, what comps we would use, or what, how would the appraisal process work? Would that vitograph property, is that, is it, can that be considered, or is?
I think, first of all, in the appraisal, our appraisal process that we use is we hire an appraisal, an appraiser who issues an appraisal to us, and then we have that reviewed by another review appraiser to make sure that all of the methodology they use was appropriate and accurate, and that we're getting the best price for that property. The purchase of the property at 123 South Hudson might be a comp that an appraiser would pull into the list of transactions that he looks at, but it would be rejected because, for certain reasons, and mostly because it isn't a sale of property between two private parties or two, you know, two parties, it was a purchase by the foundation who wanted that particular piece of property because of its proximity to the Myriad Gardens, and then the rest of the transaction involved a charitable contribution, so that it wasn't a typical, it isn't a typical purchase, it isn't one of the typical transactions, and there's other much better examples that we could use. The city's been, obviously, acquiring property for the park for the last two years, so there are, there are other comps in the area that we can use, and.
I think, I mean, what happened in that case was the property owner used an appraisal that just considered elevated comps, like Chesapeake purchases of land that were above appraised value, and so you got kind of a distorted.
Well, the other thing about that transaction that makes it a little bit different than property in the Corda Shore area is that it has several very active businesses on it, so you would look at the income approach for the appraisal of it. A lot of the property in the Corda Shore area doesn't have businesses that are as vital as the ones that are on those properties. So I, you know, we try to, we find comps, you know, real comparable sales, and I, that transaction is not a comparable sale.
On the commitments of the city, in the 2.66 million, did the Council have veto over those, or did they consider them a case-by-case basis, or how did this occur for the previous 2.66 million?
I believe all of those were approved by the City Council. They went to the Economic Development Trust first and then came to City Council.
So on a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
So I guess the question is, why not continue on the remaining 2.3 million, the way, I mean, why are we changing, why are we entering into this agreement that just gives kind of carte blanche, as opposed to doing it on a case-by-case basis like we've done with the first 2.66 million?
I think we were trying to use the same, some of the same processes that we use on the Maps Three property. The difference with Maps Three property is that it is, it is Maps Three money, so the City Council has to approve those sales. This is, this is the way that the city has typically purchased property for redevelopment. If we need to look at making some changes to that, I think we can sit down with the city's attorneys and talk about it some more. I don't have them with me right now, so.
I mean, on the first 2.66 million, the Council effectively had some veto over how TIF II funds were used, or whether it would be used for that purchase or not?
I think the difficulty with land purchases is that we had, you know, we've already negotiated, in those cases, we had already negotiated with the people selling the property, and if we were to go back on that, even at the Council level, I think there could be some legal difficulties in that, some, you know, at least bad faith kinds of allegations made.
And just, I think it's pretty clear in the agreement, but I just want to emphasize, under no circumstances does the city have an additional financial obligation to Okura or the Economic Development Trust beyond this 2.3 million.
No, the agreement would have to be amended, or we'd have to enter into some other agreement in order to do that.
Thank you.
Gary? Just a quick question, on the resale of the property that's mentioned in the agreement, for those parcels, that would follow something along the line of what you're doing in other parcels, where you take RFPs for it and so forth? There's some control over what goes into that area?
Yes, definitely. It would, it would be part of a, a typical urban renewal process involves the issuing of an RFP for redevelopment services. We pick a developer based upon their responses, and the Urban Renewal Authority has a great deal of control over design, use, schedules, all kinds of things, that's a part of that.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Kathy? All right, have a motion on item 8S? Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Thanks, Kathy. Item 8T has a Maps for Kids opportunity involving the downtown elementary school, it's in Ward Six, Meg.
Sorry, Mayor, I would move approval of this resolution. It approves a million and a half allocation of our downtown TIF for the downtown elementary school that's located at Walker in Sheridan.
Okay.
Just for a point of clarification, there were dollars set up in the budget for the original TIF II when it was established, four dollars for, it was in the area, within the project area for the Oklahoma City Public Schools.
Right. So we're voting on item 8T, cast your votes, pass unanimously. Then item 8U is a similar item for the Administration Building, which I believe is the last project in Maps for Kids, right?
It is, off the original one, yes.
We're getting there. How about a motion on item 8U?
I have a question, Your Honor.
Okay.
Is there anybody else interested in that central high school property that we know of?
I believe there is.
And are we going through a bid process or trying to maximize what we, minimize, rather, what we have to pay for?
We're still going through the process. We made an offer and received a counter.
Pardon me?
We made an offer and have received a counter.
Thank you.
Motion on item 8U?
Recommend approval.
All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8V is a resolution coming to us from Maps Three, and Mike Mize is here to give us some more information.
And these are the project requirements for the, for the public park, and this is a similar process that we've done on project requirements on other Maps Three projects.
Thank you. Mayor, Council members, Mr. Manager, we appreciate the opportunity to be here once again. We have hard copies of the presentation. We had it loaded, it seems to have disappeared, we're reloading. I have it, let's see if it works. It does, great. Just as a little bit of background information, you've seen similar project requirements documents prior to this for sidewalks, trails, wellness centers, and the fairgrounds. We'll try to be succinct in presenting this presentation. The presentation that you have is a summary of the entire project requirements document, which is, was included as part of your packet, so you have the entire document as part of your packet. What I'm going to show you today is a bit of a summary. Just as a reminder, this is to serve two primary purposes. One is to provide a set of guidelines for the architects and engineers who work on this project, and in this case, that architect or consultant is going to be preparing a master plan, and then we'll be preparing final construction documents for the park in the respective phases as we achieve those times in the schedule. And Dr. Shadid, just so that you know, the second quarter of 2013 for construction of that initial phase is what is in the implementation plan. The second purpose for these is to provide a project summary for the Maps Three Subcommittee and the Citizens Advisory Board Subcommittee's and for Council, obviously, as well. We used a number of different sources to provide these documents, we've talked to a number of different people, and have gotten input from the appropriate Subcommittee and data collected from other sources, as well as the Central Park Concept Plan. And just as a point of information, the Central Park Concept Plan, which was originally done by Hargraves, is, isn't really in effect anymore. The Hargraves you just approved today, negotiation of a contract with Hargraves to provide the actual master plan and construction documents and programming for the park, they're going to look at that as just a clean slate and start from the beginning. A number of things have changed since that original concept plan, so they plan to look at this with a whole set of fresh eyes to provide that master plan and programming for the park. The project requirements, there are a number of different sections which are summarized here, the background, the project description, and most importantly, from my perspective anyway, is budget and schedule. The project requirements documents are intended to be guidelines, requirements is just a term that has been used in the city for a long time, but it's a, you could look at it as a laundry list, a list of ideas that could be incorporated into the master plan and the programming. It will be up to the consultant, in this case, Hargraves, to make sure that that programming and that those facilities that are defined in their master plan and drawings meet the budget and the schedule, which had been previously approved by Council. The process that we've gone through is, it's been reviewed by the MAPS staff, the Subcommittee planning, and the city parks departments have had an opportunity to review this document. It's been presented to the Citizens Advisory Board, and it's being presented here today for receipt by Council. Quick reminder, 40-acre Upper Park, we've seen a lot of diagrams today about the park for other purposes. First phase will be to develop a master plan, and then a limited amount of construction in the Upper Park area that will take place fairly quickly, as Councilman Shadid pointed out, starting, with construction starting probably in the second quarter of 2013. The second phase will include the amenities, facilities, and programming to complete the Upper Park, and the third phase will be completion of the Lower Park. Once again, the design considerations are enumerated within the full document that you've received, and include background, master plan, programming, additional considerations, coordination of effort, and that is something that has been stressed by not only the Park Committee, Convention Center Subcommittee, Street that those particular components of MAPS-3 function well together. This is just a stylized graphic of the park. It's obviously not to scale, but shows the relationship of the park with some of the other components around the park area. The budget, which was approved in the implementation plan by city council, and the schedule. One of the, there is one change that needs to be made, as I understand, needs to be made today, an amendment on page 10 that was made by the subcommittee and by the advisory board that needs to be specifically mentioned today, as I understand it, as part of your approval or receipt of this document, and that's on page 10. And it's literally the change in two words from, in the third bullet point on page 10, it says, "Design should be based on community policing. Community policing needs to be changed to crime prevention." But that would be the only change that we're aware of that needs to be made to the document this morning. Are there any questions or comments?
Mike, this is really, I mean, you're, this is, the next step is a development of a master plan that comes only after public participation, and, I mean, this isn't the final design considerations.
No, as I've said, this is not, this is not the final design consideration at all. This is a set of guidelines that's been developed by the Park Subcommittee and with the help of planning and the Parks Department and city staff to help provide some guidelines and some thoughts about programming that could happen in the park. It really is up to that, to Hargraves as the consultant, and they've indicated in their interview, and I think we all agree, that there needs to be a significant amount of citizen participation in this process before any final master plan is developed and approved by city council as well. So a significant portion of their work going forward will be community input, working with the Park Subcommittee, working with other elements of the community to make sure that that community input has been provided in that master plan.
And what would be the timeline for development of a master plan?
The master, we're hoping to have the master plan developed within the next nine to 12 months.
But you're starting construction in nine months?
Construction will start on a very small portion of the park in, if we meet the schedule, in, well, in just about nine or 12 months, that's correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the first part of what Mike's out here to explain on item 8V? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now, item 8W, a somewhat related in that it's MAPS-3, but this has to do with the MAPS-3 Transit Modern Streetcar Route.
That's right. Once again, this is, we'll bring that, this up. This is a proposed modification to the streetcar route. A number of the streetcar Subcommittee members are here. They just walked up to the front. I want to make sure you recognize that they're here. In the first slide, the first slide shows the proposed route that was received by city council about a year ago. As I'm sure you're aware, the Transit, the Streetcar Subcommittee has done an awful lot of work since then, has been working with Jacobs through their contract with COTPA, and has made a recommendation to modify the route slightly, and I'll show you. The second slide shows the new proposed route in red. Most of what is north of Sheridan, particularly on the Robinson and Broadway portions, all the way up to 13th, is identical to the route that you saw before. Portions of this below Sheridan are also similar, but there are some changes. There is now a proposed two-rail route which would go effectively on the east, west, and south sides of the Chesapeake Arena and the Cox Convention Center, then go east on Sheridan and north up to the Bricktown Residential Area. And that's the significant change that's been made to this proposed plan. This has been vetted by, and actually proposed by, the Transit Subcommittee. This helps assure that there's coordination between the Convention Center, the Myriad Gardens Par, the new Downtown Park, Myriad Gardens Park, and with the residential area in north of Bricktown. So those are the significant changes. It's been received and approved by the Citizens Advisory Board, and it is before you today to be received. Sir?
I think, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
The other, the other entity that needs, this needs to be coordinated with, and frankly, I have the most concern with, I think is the most pressing issue, is coordination with ODOT. And I heard Mr. Green's presentation to the Convention Center Subcommittee and to the Transit Subcommittee, and I, well, first, I wasn't aware of some of the plans, and so I'm in a little bit of shock that so much of the connection from I-40 West is, and this is outside the purview of MAPS-3, I understand, but it's above grade, that there's a bridge going over Western, Classen, and Reno, and that it never comes down to grade until we get to Lee. And then, for just a short period between Lee and then somewhere halfway between Robinson and Shields, it's at grade, and then it goes below grade to go underneath the railways. So I guess some of my conceptions that we were going to have this long boulevard at grade, that you could have retail development and street development, and I guess are vanishing, and that's very disappointing and sad for me. But in terms of integration with the streetcar, it just didn't seem like, Mr. Green, and he admitted that he wasn't part of the rail division of ODOT, and that, and he didn't say no to a lot of the questions that were posed to him, but it didn't seem like that maybe some of the letters that were sent to him over the last year and a half, asking for integration, asking for consideration of what was outlined in the Intermodal Station Master Plan, which basically called for coordination of the boulevard and the BNSF bridge design with ODOT. Didn't seem like there was a lot of familiarity with that. Mr. Green was, his understanding was that the streetcar was not running on rail or the electricity at that point. I didn't, I thought that was a fairly profound shortcoming in terms of the understanding of what was, now, to be fair, the streetcar until now wasn't going down the boulevard, but now with this route, it will be going double-track down the, down the boulevard. And I thought that some of the questions about accommodating the streetcar route both now and then in maybe future, in terms of having utility-free lanes, there just isn't, that's not, doesn't seem to be on ODOT's radar. And I have profound considerations as we're, as he's talking about fairly quickly wrapping this up, I mean, by 2014 or incentives to do it even earlier, that there has not been the kind of integration with transit. I mean, I understand that there's been some meetings we're planning in Public Works and others have met with ODOT. I'm not, just not sure that ODOT is listening to us or responding to us.
Eric, let's let, let's let Eric respond to that. Eric, how closely are we working with ODOT on the boulevard, and how are we going to incorporate the MAPS-3 streetcar into the boulevard design?
So regarding the city's participation in the boulevard, we've been closely coordinated with ODOT for several months, actually for almost a year now, and we've held a number of meetings. They're aware that we're leaving the possibilities for a streetcar open along the boulevard. Some of the questions that have come up is whether or not it's going to run in a lane of traffic, or if it's going to run down the boulevard itself. We've prescribed that we'd like to keep that in a lane of traffic, which is why the traffic lanes for the boulevard are going to be designed much like Project 180, 11-foot lanes that will provide for that. The actual coordination of the, of the streetcar, though, with the regard to the bridge passing underneath the Burlington Northern, the heights for that bridge are being set to accommodate the streetcar to make sure that that's a real possibility. But there's still some additional studies when it comes to the streetcar and what those actual requirements are going to be. So there is a consultant that's being engaged, and we have not selected things like track types or the power system for the car, and so there's, there's a lot of planning we can do with ODOT at this point, making sure that we don't put ourselves into a corner. But at the same time, we've got to wait for some of the other consulting to occur so that we know exactly what it is that we're going to construct.
Eric, I think what, it's not just what our current plans are, but what didn't seem to be on the radar was the possibility of Phase 3 expansions, additional rail lines in the future, and being able, building the below-grade passage, not just for our plans right now, but for future expansions. And I just want to make sure that that gets incorporated into the planning and the coordination, to not do all this below-grade construction, and then however many years in the future have to do something all again.
So the below-grade, just under the interstate, or excuse me, under the Burlington Northern, we have to do that just for vehicular traffic. Streetcar aside, we're having to make sure that we can accommodate truck traffic and other vehicles that are entering and exiting the boulevard. And so that's all being taken into consideration. So we've not left anything untouched, and so whether it's a streetcar or streetcar expansion, we should be able to accommodate at any point along the boulevard or any of the new construction in 180 in future expansion as we go into Bricktown and west of downtown now with the new boulevard as well.
But just so we're clear, you're considering the Phase 3 build-out expansion of the elevated north-south alignment of BNSF?
I'm not sure what Phase 3 is.
Of the Intermodal Hub Study, where in the future you might have light rail, high-speed rail, I mean, the possibility for expanding wider.
So those are discussions that we're having with ODOT, and whether there'd be additional tracks added to the elevated railroad, yes. Those are all being discussed and how that grade works along the new boulevard, yes.
Where you'd put the wall?
Yes.
Placing the ramp accordingly.
But they have not finished any of those designs, so we've not gone through a formal design review yet, but all that has been discussed.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Eric.
Look, let me, Eric, let me, let me ask you a question. Explain to me how far, how much of the, it's a little bit off the subject, but we've got into it here about the boulevard being elevated. How much of it's going to be elevated? And is, I know it has to be elevated over the track, because you, you can't...
No, 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 no. It'll go under the track.
It goes under the track.
I mean, but what's, then what's the reason for the elevation on the west end?
We've got the interchanges either at I-35 or at I-44 that are already in elevated conditions, and so it's a matter of bringing those down to grade. The other elevation that Councilman Shadid mentioned was crossing Western, Classen, and some of those other intersections that are just very complicated right now west of downtown. We did not find a good solution to bring it down at grade to get to Western and Classen, because they're so close together, the intersections from just geometric design don't quite work.
I mean, the whole purpose, well, one of the purposes, it seemed to me, in not repairing the existing I-40 was that it was not at grade. It was, it was dangerous, and it, it will fall apart again, the way it fell apart the last time. If it's above grade and freezes, and ice freezes it, it's going to, we're going to have the, we're just going to have a miniature of what we tried to get rid of.
So let me, let me define elevated. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a bridge like we have seen the I-40 today. What we're looking at is more like overpasses. These would be similar to what you'd see along I-240. Simply, it's on embankments, but it may have some vertical walls on each side, so it's actually on dirt.
How long is this stretch where you're going to have these overpasses?
Basically, from, right now, the proposal would be Western Avenue to Lee, but then it would be at grade west of Western, but it might be in an elevated condition. It might be on an embankment as it gets ready to approach and get towards I-44. But it would be at grade. It would be on dirt.
But Eric, did you consider a roundabout in that Western, Classen, Reno area?
They've looked at a lot of options, so the answer is yes, it was discussed, but I don't know that there's been any final decisions made. That would be a complicated arrangement as well, but yes, it's been, it's been on the table.
You know, we're not trying to do what ODOT traditionally tries to do. We're not trying to move as many cars along that area as fast as we can. That's not the purpose. The purpose is exactly the opposite of that. The purpose is to have it a slower pace so you can have development. So if you build it like an interstate highway, even if you only build 100 yards of it that way, you've defeated the whole purpose of why we're doing this, why we wanted a boulevard.
We're clearly trying to build this into a boulevard with slow traffic, narrower lanes, into 180 mode, you know, and you're coming from the east...
But any place you restrict access on either side of it, it doesn't matter if they're going eight miles an hour, if they can't get off. I mean, if you can't build a business there, if you can't put some reason for people to slow down there, I, I think we ought to be looking at, at doing everything we can to make it pedestrian-friendly, literally, on either side of the boulevard. Otherwise, we're just recreating what we don't want.
Well, one of the things they talked about in the meeting the other day is that, if you, if you can picture it, where the current, the old I-40 footprint hits Western, Classen, and goes over Reno, because it's coming at an angle right in there, it, it would be logistically very hard to put traffic signals in a way that would work if it was all at grade, because you're not more than 100 foot apart as you go down through there. That's their reasoning for bringing it back up. But they're going to come, the boulevard is going to be at grade all the way from the track until you get to Lee or Dewey or somewhere along in there, and then it's simply got to get up to get up over that Reno-Western Classen area, and then it's just following the same design that they've got on the, on the old I-40 now.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean, I don't know, from my standpoint, I don't know that I want them to get up and get over there. I want it to be a slower-paced boulevard, not a way to get there quicker. And that's, the whole, ODOT's whole problem is they're, they're based on getting every, getting a car there as quick as they can, and that's just one way, that's just another intention.
Yeah, I think they're taking a lot of steps to do what we want, and this is certainly not new. I mean, I've been aware of where it go to grade for at least five years. Through the quarter shore process and through all of our discussions through the years, and especially during the vote for MAPS-3, we would, a lot of times, be asked about the boulevard and the plans for that. So I know it's not necessarily been communicated throughout the community, because not everybody cares all that much about a road that's several years away, but to the extent we've had opportunities to talk about it, we certainly have. And, and one thing it does, I'll, I understand the, the idea of having opportunities to get on and off earlier, but one thing it does, it allows us to more highly concentrate the, the amenities around that half-mile to a mile area where it is at grade, and to really make it a special place, because we have the same amount of money, you know, you don't, we don't have to stretch it out quite as far. But it is an engineering challenge to slow people down that are coming off I-40, and we have talked about how are we going to communicate to drivers that they're, you know, entering a place where a lesser speed is going to be demanded of them very, very shortly, and there are, there are ways to do that.
Do you think we could, I mean, because I've only known about it for five days, I mean, do you think, ODOT's presenting to all the subcommittees, do you think they could come and talk to us and just kind of?
We're planning on that, sir.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right. Mike, anything more before we hear from the streetcar folks?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Jeff, you want to come up and give us some thoughts on this?
I'm Jeff Esdeck. I serve on your former Alternatives Analysis Committee for the MAPS-3 Streetcar and the Streetcar Subcommittee. We have two other Subcommittee members, Mark Gibbs and Jill Adler here this morning, and Marion Hutchinson, who was on the Intermodal Hub Study. I first wanted to address just quickly a little bit of misinformation regarding the issue with the hub integration. While we're talking about the streetcar route, I just want to make sure that it's on the record what the issue is. When you're coming off of, onto the new boulevard off of the Mixmaster, being the I-35 Broadway Extension, new I-40 interchange, you're elevated up behind Harkins Theater, that elevated portion starts to come down to grade, and then at the Oklahoma intersection, which is next to the existing U-Haul building, that intersection is at grade. As it passes through that intersection, the boulevard starts to go down again and depress to go underneath the north-south BNSF tracks, which are existing. And so they're essentially building a bridge or a tunnel there to go underneath those tracks, and then it comes back up on the other side and comes back up to grade before we reach the new Convention Center. Where the concern was at the Subcommittee meeting was the folks like Marion, who have worked on the Intermodal Hub Study. The Intermodal Hub Study was done in partnership with ODOT and with ACOG, and it provides a developmental plan for... a developmental plan for that facility 65 years out into the future. And that provides for three phases. Now, we don't know how many trains or when trains would come online if we build a regional transit system, or if high-speed rail is ever a reality. I mean, who knows? But there are pinch points in that design that are essential to remain free and clear so that that facility can be expanded without, without huge cost. One of the pinch points as far as the Boulevard is concerned is the eastern wall that faces Bricktown, that eastern wall of the Elevate Track presumably is going to be moved further east as more tracks are added. Where that declination ramp is coming off of Oklahoma Boulevard, it's critical to establishing how steep that, that ramp is and where the ramp is so that the clearances for semis, for trucks, for vehicles, which I believe is around 16'4', is maintained without having to rip out the Boulevard later to redo that grade. In the Subcommittee meeting, there was a lot of concern about making sure that ODOT looked at the intermodal hub study. They had, Mr. Green indicated that they had not, and they had not studied this issue. But just simply adjusting that grade at the right place could save the city millions of dollars in the future and make that facility more easily expandable. So on that element, there's a huge design consideration that needs to be coordinated. And in fact, the last line of the hub study, the very, the very last line says, this was done by Jacobs with ACOG and ODOT, "Close coordination with ODOT. Boulevard design in the city of Oklahoma City on allowing developments within the urban plaza area exists in the guideway need to be, will be needed to ensure long-term capacity of future hub expansions." And it talks about the Boulevard and the future expansion will impact the railroad bridge and potentially the design of the Boulevard. The design should take into account the widening of the east side of the bridge for the Elevate Guideway since the road may need to be lowered slightly to provide adequate vertical clearance of the widened bridge. So they didn't seem to be cognizant of the issue. The Subcommittee was alarmed by this because there are various volunteers that have served on both committees, and we're concerned about it. As far as the streetcar is concerned, the biggest expense to any kind of rail project is utility relocation. And whether it's for the, since we're building a brand-new street, we have an opportunity to stretch the MAPS dollars by integrating a brand-new street and locating the utilities out of the way so that this brand-new street goes in and the streetcar's integrated. Mr. Green suggested that we will be going into final design, I believe it's sometime next year, so essentially we have, up until the fall, really firm up our plans on the streetcar to inform their process before they go into final design. And today, you approve the contract negotiations with Jacobs URS. Hopefully, we can ramp up that process and get those folks in the same room together. But Councilman Greenwell, I noted your comments the other day about trying to get light rail in the future out to Meridian, to the airport, going for the west. If we have a future MAPS or some other initiative that has rail incorporated into it, one of the things that they could do as part of the design is provide a utility-free corridor the entire distance of the Boulevard, not just for the MAPS streetcar. But nobody's thinking that far in advance, unfortunately. So that meeting last Wednesday was the first chance that we really had to get them in the room with us to tell them, we're worried about, we want your people in with our people. As far as the streetcar route, which is before you, is concerned, we listened to Council members, we went to other Subcommittee meetings, Park Subcommittee, Convention Center Subcommittee. Mr. Williams has, Roy Williams of the Chamber has been on the, on the tour among, I'd say, probably 30 individuals involved in this process to get feedback. And one thing that kept coming up was needing to touch the park, having a stop right at the park and the new convention center. And since the route came before you last year, we did not know exactly where the convention center was going to be, and we weren't definitively sure that Santa Fe would be the facility or how we would get into Bricktown. Now all those questions have been answered. We now know we can go under the Sheridan Bridge to get in Bricktown. We know that Santa Fe is the hub facility. We know the Park Subcommittee really wants a stop at their facility, and we know the Convention Center Committee wants a stop integrated into the Convention Center facility. So this route is a design change. The first route that went before you was a dashed line, and that was intentionally dashed since these questions weren't answered. Now they have been answered. I would like to point out one other thing. Since the route has been put out there, we have seen development, a developmental response occur. It's been noted Chris Cassie with the Kirkpatrick Foundation is, you know, weighing heavily their decision to move City Arts Place to the north end on Broadway because of the streetcar. Gary Brooks with the Edge Development has designed their Mercy redevelopment site to respond to the streetcar. We have seen the new proposals for the Century Center be a direct response in helping with their decisions about this. And I would like to just point out that if First National become, one of their huge issues with redeveloping and making that building functional, no matter who's in charge of doing it, is the parking situation. And so having the streetcar flank First National on Robinson and Broadway will perhaps help that building be more viable. And lastly, there have been a lot of concerns about utilities on Robinson and Broadway. I feel confident, I was on the selection team for the consultant, and the consultant has been very responsive to saying, we're going to work to do innovative utility solutions to get around those utilities. They seem to think that it's not going to be as big of a deal, and they also seem to think that we can speed up the process with the streetcar program overall. And so there's a lot of good news. Unfortunately, things are happening so fast, just missing a meeting at this point is, it does affect the other projects going on. So the ODOT situation is huge, the new Boulevard situation is huge. Coordination with the outlying Project 180 program, getting Jacobs to get the drawings done for that, that's huge too, just saving money and stretching the MAPS dollar. Do you have any questions? I know there, there was some discussion as well at the Subcommittee meeting about what does the MAPS Transit Dollar provide for. You know, the way I looked at it initially myself was that we had essentially a $120 million budget. Of course, it's flexible, as all of MAPS is flexible. And then $10 million was added on through the efforts of Mr. White, our former Councilman, Sam Bowman, for doing the commuter rail hub, the intermodal hub in Santa Fe, and acquiring properties to make that facility functional, which we're only in the process right now of acquiring the hub facility itself. We're actually not in the process because we haven't been directed to or haven't had the opportunity to look at other parcels approaching that facility and then commuter rail or rail connections to that facility.
Do you have to say about what the meeting to get away from is? It bogs down a lot of issues that aren't pertinent to the day's agenda, so if somebody wants to say something, fine, but we could be here literally the rest of the day discussing issues that are not necessarily pertinent to the agenda.
I just want to make a short, I want to make a short comment.
Okay.
You brought up at the end, and I'll try to, I will try to keep it short.
Okay.
The, in, with regard to other projects, it seems to me that we are, you talk about these pinch points, we're at a pinch point right now with regard to what we can use the hub for. And we have, we need, I believe, to start immediately to try to acquire that small section of land, of track right away that UP has that would connect it to the Northeast Line. Because I think if we'd start now to do that, then we could truly make the hub a hub. Something would hub into that. We could then open up the Northeast Line. I think that's all part of what was contemplated by the money that was allocated especially for the hub, and I think that's, that's something that ought to be a priority one with regard to that small portion of that $10 million. It ought to be acquiring that section of track. I don't know how far it is. It's probably not more than four or five city blocks long. Is that?
Well, Mr. White, you know, Mr. Kemper's here. We, you know, as you're aware, we had a meeting with Union Pacific. Three councilors were in that meeting. Union Pacific essentially said, where's your study? Where's your plan? We don't have one. There has been a proposal to put a study together of the Northeast Corridor into the ACOG's Alternatives Analysis. There are individuals who, including myself, that do not believe that that is the appropriate mechanism necessarily to get all the answers that we need as fast as we need them, but, you know, there's.
But don't we need the land, no matter what?
Essentially, you probably do, not just to connect the Northeast Line, but for connecting to Tinker Midwest City.
I mean, that right away needs to be there. I mean, it hooks to the only two possible short-term, quick rail projects. That's the Tinker Line and the Northeast Line. It hooks to those. Without that, we couldn't do either one of those.
Well, just to button it up so we can move forward with this particular item, it was discussed at the Subcommittee meeting this past Wednesday at length, if you would like the Jacobs URS contract to include analysis of approaches to the intermodal hub facility, there is an opportunity for staff to examine that, but the City Council would need to direct staff that they would like that study, the streetcar study, to look at other connections and other acquisition, what would take to make that facility functional.
At the risk of not keeping this short, I'd like to, I'd like to see us do that. If there's some, if it needs to come back here for a vote separate on a separate item, I'd like to see us do that because I just can't believe we can let that.
We can add that to the scope of the Jacobs.
Yeah, I just can't believe we can let that get away from us and hope to go forward. That's just a little, small piece of track, but if, I think it's a big deal.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak so regularly about this issue. I do think that the MAPS streetcar is often one of the most complicated MAPS projects because of so many areas that it touches and so many neighborhoods that it goes through and just the breadth of the program. And so we appreciate, we put the effort forth, and, you know, just to remind you, we are aware that we work for you and for the citizens of this city. Thank you.
We appreciate your work. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Mayor, may I make just a very tiny comment as well?
Yes.
And that is, I just really want to thank the committee and thank everybody here today for working so hard to come up with a solution across the Walnut Bridge. I think that is sort of the crowning jewel to this piece by connecting the residential units, not just at the level, but, but all of Deep Deuce Apartments, and provides for that linkage that we've all talked about for so long up to other parts of town. So I think it's a really beautiful solution to be able to double-track it just over the bridge. How lucky we are that the bridge has three lanes, there are lots of things that came together to make this work. But I want to particularly thank you and your committee for looking so forward to make sure that that piece happens.
All right. Skip.
And I agree with, with Councilman White. I think the opportunity for us to acquire that, that track is of major, major importance. And looking back, I think sometimes, you know, what may not have been the original plan, but if you can recall the debate of the Walnut Bridge, be not for the fierce opposition of those individuals who stood firmly to fight for that bridge, we wouldn't even be talking about that issue as far as a connector now. And so I think that the vision that Councilman White has now realized as it relates to, to that UP section, you know, is something that we need to seriously consider as far as our opportunity to acquire that for future track connections.
All right. David?
Your Honor, I'll be quick. I would just like to, and it's probably too late to make any difference, but I just think if we were, would consider, well, first of all, I agree with Councilman White and Councilman Kelly on acquiring that property. We really need to look at that. But as far as the route, if we could spread that out a little bit so that we could have it run more along Reno as it goes into Bricktown to accommodate the hotels out there once we get the convention center opened, and then go a little bit further west, more so out by the Civic Center. And I don't see the need, I know this is going to create some controversy, to go that far north initially. If we looked at the model, for example, like in Portland, Oregon, it's more of a central circular thing around the core part of downtown, and then they start having the other types of rail that connects to it. We've got more of a line going up north that I just think if we flattened it out, we could, we could go through Central Park or the Quartershore Park, go right by the convention center, go up to the Civic Center, and then go further east into Bricktown to go right along the hotels that are along Reno. Allow us to utilize those hotel rooms to support the convention center when we do have large areas, and I just, again, don't see the need to go that far north. Thank you.
Anybody else? How about a motion then on Item 8W? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 8X is a resolution from the Parks Committee to help send a continuing message that we would prefer there not be smoking in our parks. State law does limit the amount of enforcement that we can apply to these situations, but nonetheless, if we have opinions, we can't express them. Comments or questions on Item 8X? Yeah, Ed?
You know, I.
I know you've got a resolution later if it's similar.
I was going to go ahead and just bring the amendments and talk about them now, if that's all right?
Yeah, sure.
You know, last night I was in a restaurant with my kids, eating outdoors, and a gentleman's smoking, he's talking to some woman, and the smoke, it's incredible, it's just going down, and we're all just smelling it throughout. And I've got a choice. I can either go talk to this gentleman and ask him to quit smoking. I have that choice. If I'm not there, my children are not going to go up to this man and ask him to quit smoking. They just, they don't have a choice. And I think ultimately, that's, that's who this is about, is the children. It's extending the policy that was made when the state decided not to have smoking in the zoo anywhere outdoors because there's too many children, there's too many animals, the butts are dangerous, and they, they didn't allow it in the zoo. So this is extending the same kind of policymaking to the rest of the outdoors, to the rest of our Parks Department. I've read in some blogs, comments, people commenting that the city would just do this to have more fines and more revenues. Understand that, that there are no fines with this policy. And in fact, I like it better that way because if, if your thinking is that this is about a $10 or $50 or $100 fine, I don't think that, with all due respect, that you really understand the economic development consequences of what's happening in Oklahoma City, in Oklahoma. We have sky-high smoking rates, 24%. And it's not about a $10 or $50 fine, it's about a multinational corporation deciding to relocate here or leave here because our healthcare costs are so much higher here. And part of the reason is one out of four people smoking. And part of that is the messages that children receive. There is no safe level of secondhand smoke. The levels of secondhand smoke outdoors can reach the same level as those indoors. I would move that we, that we advance this resolution that the Parks Commission adopted, but with two exceptions. The first is that at the last minute, there was language put into the Parks Commission resolution that says Oklahoma law does not allow municipalities to prohibit smoking in outdoor areas. That comes down definitively taking a position that that's the interpretation of the law. The problem is that there was an Assistant Attorney General in 2010 who said the opposite, that municipalities can regulate outdoor smoking in parks. We have, and two weeks ago, our municipal counselor said, we need to get an Attorney General opinion to get clarification on this because, recognize that there's 21 cities and counties who have already done this. The county, all county of Oklahoma property has, is tobacco-free. So they've already, now they have no fine, but it's all tobacco-free. Norman, Edmund, many other cities. The city of Lawton's municipal counselor said, you know, you can do this, you can regulate. regulate parking outdoors." So to come down with such definitive language, if this is our, puts us at odds with many people who've come to different conclusions, and I just think if we're seeking an Attorney General opinion, that means that there's a gray area, that this hasn't been decided yet. And so, I'd just like to see that language stricken, because it's extraneous to the resolution. It doesn't matter, doesn't impact the resolution if it's in there or not. And I just had some slides. If somebody could pull those up, I don't know if anybody, and go to the third slide. I don't know if there's anybody available to do that. The Second Amendment or request is to really emphasize, it's the third slide and then down, is to really emphasize the signage aspect, because again, you don't, you're not assessing fines with this resolution. You're really, this is just, these are just examples of what's been done in other cities. This is what, can you just flip through them, and you can just see what's done in other cities? And so, to work with citizens, maybe have a contest, maybe get citizen input, of what kind of signage we could put in our signs, it's an opportunity to try and unlink athletics and recreation activity with tobacco. You could be a little more abrasive, like New York, and do something like that, or you could tone it down a little, but the point is that you can utilize signage to try and educate the populace, to try and send a message, to allow that situation I was in last night, where there's somebody smoking, let the signage try and emphasize to that smoker, "You're impacting other people," rather than asking children to go up to an adult and ask them to not smoke around them. Thank you.
Your Honor, I just make one quick comment. It may not be too quick. I'm following Pete's example. I totally support the concept. I think we, secondhand smoke is a hazard, but I'm not sure this method really is what I would like to see done. It implies, that sign implies that there's some prohibition about smoking in parks, and that's not the case, because despite what 21 other cities have done, we don't have a clear, we don't have the clear authority to prohibit smoking in a park. That's why we're asking for the AG's opinion. And to do this before we have that in our hands, before we are allowed to do that, I think is a mistake. The concept is wonderful. I really agree with it, but if we're going to do this, let's put, let's not have, let's have no smoking at all in Oklahoma City.
But doesn't it depend on the wording we use?
Well, maybe it does, Your Honor, but I still think the implication is going to be that we have prohibited smoking.
Well, I think we need to be careful that we don't imply something that we don't mean.
That's my concern.
But I think we can get the message out, and there'll be, you know, there'll be some level of adherence, I think. I think this is a step in the right direction. But I'm with you. If what you're saying is, if we don't believe that we have the opportunity to make this a strict no-smoking ordinance, we better be careful what we say on a sign.
I think it's...
It sets a dangerous precedent for us to kind of step in on state law, or our version, or our opinion about state law.
Have a sign in front of that restaurant, no sales allowed.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could, you could get carried away with concepts like this. I agree.
Well, that sign's maybe over the top, but some of the rest of them weren't. I mean, this sign has a violator be fined $50 in it. We're not going to say that, because we don't, we're not putting...
You know, we could just, if the sign says, "We ask you not to smoke in our parks." Oklahoma City Council at the bottom.
What's wrong with that?
Something like that seems fairly upfront.
Just put across the top of that one. We like tobacco-free parks.
You could have kids share their, "Please refrain from smoking," or something like that. Yes?
Yes.
Well, a request is about all we can do.
Pete, did we not do this with seatbelts? I mean, when we first, with seatbelts, I mean, we didn't have a fine, but it was against policy to not wear your seatbelt in a car?
Against the law not to wear, not to use a seatbelt in a car, rather a policy that was set out with? Now, we have the right to enforce it now. That's a little different.
It's like you did on seatbelts, is they passed the law that you have to wear a seatbelt, but didn't attach a fine to it. So that's the analogy.
We had a law rather than just a policy.
Yeah, there was a law.
Well, are we ready to vote on item 8X?
Did you...
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a couple people that have signed up to speak. Okay. And then, are we going to come back to your amendment later when we get to it?
Ideally, Councilman Shadid's item 10D are just his amendments to the Parks Commission's proposed resolution, so ideally you should consider them together.
Okay, we'll do that then. Ed, what are your amendments?
The amendment was to strike the language about definitively what state law includes. And then, second, just to have citizen participation in trying to develop what this signage is going to be, have the city staff come up with the signage that satisfies what was discussed here.
Okay. Pete?
Second.
Okay. Well, let these, let's call for our citizens to come up and speak, and then I'll ask for Ed to make a motion on his amendment when it's appropriate. Brittany Hodges?
Yes.
Hi. We'll need your name and address for the record, Brittany, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Brittany Hodges. Address is 5301 Eden Drive in Oklahoma City. And I would just like to say thank you for hearing this on your agenda today. And I personally feel that the signs are an important component of passing such a policy like this one. The main thing to keep in mind is, a lot of times with issues like this, is awareness leading to compliance. So if you have that sign up, a lot of times people will be courteous and put it out, especially if they've got, you know, their eight-year-old child saying, "Okay, Dad, let's not smoke here." You know, a lot of parents are going to hopefully be, comply with the policy. So that's my personal opinion about the signs. I'm also a staff member for the Oklahoma County Tobacco Use Prevention Coalition, and this resolution passed by the Parks, or Parks Commission does state that they'll work with local tobacco use prevention groups, such as ours, to help the public become aware of this policy. And so that's something that we will definitely be here to work with the Parks and Rec staff to do that. Basically, Mr. Shadid has said it well, there's no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure. That was said in 2006 by the Surgeon General of the United States. So that's basically the comments that I have, and I would like to thank you again for hearing this on your agenda today.
You bet. Thanks for sticking around, Brittany. And we have a group here from the Eagle Ridge Institute for Youth. Yes, sir. You representing this organization? Fine-looking young people you have.
My name is Hyawatha Bolden. I'm with Eagle Ridge Institute. I live in Midwest City. However, I work Oklahoma County. I'm the former chairman of the Oklahoma County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, and I work not only tobacco, but I work all aspects of substance abuse prevention for the county. Dr. Shadid, you hit it right on the head. Children have no choice. That's the bottom line. My daughter got in Sunday. Her husband is a staff sergeant in the United States Marine Corps. He recently had to just go to California, so she came in with my three-year-old grandson. When they come back to Oklahoma, it would be nice to have a place where they can go that would be tobacco-free. Children see, children do. These youth that are out of school right now are here on their own time, but when they go to these parks, they want the same thing. It's not about being a tobacco police. It's not about paying a fine. It is about using these types of signs. On our highways, "My daddy works here. Slow down." Guys, if we give the information properly, we can educate and change attitudes, and those signs will do that perfectly, but we have to let them design these things. But I know when we went to the Parks Council this year, our kids did do signs to show for that, and I think that's what's moving us ahead now. We're here to support that effort in any way we can, but the bottom line is, it is for our students. And if you all would like to just say a couple of words, please. I appreciate your time and your support.
Hi, my name is Jarno Mopar, and he's right about that, because like, I love going to the park, playing basketball, soccer, whatever it is, but when I see like, this smell of smoke or something, it kind of affects how I play. I start coughing. I just don't want to go anymore. I see the little buds and everything, and it, like, I'm like, really? Why do people come and smoke? That can cause fires. That's causing like, health to the kids. And then like, people say, "We are the future," and if you want, like, what you're, oh, sorry. What you're basically doing is, you're killing the future, because the cigarettes and everything. I have asthma, too, so that's a big problem for me. When I'm like downtown and I see someone smoking, I kind of ask them politely, you know, "May you please, you know, do that somewhere else or something?" And they go like, "No, you know, I bought this. You know, I can do whatever I want." That's kind of messed up, you know.
I appreciate. Thank you. Yes. Anybody else want to speak? Well, we appreciate y'all's interest in this issue coming down, and we'll be voting on it shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anyone here else here wishing to speak on this item? 8X? Yes, sir. I'm
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Doc Matheny at 2725 West Wilshire. I hadn't planned on speaking today, but I thought that there were just one or two points that might be helpful, just to clarify from my perspective. I just had it happen to have attended several of the Parks Commission meetings where this issue was discussed, and there was considerable discussion about the distinction between an ordinance and a resolution, and so that was discussed at some length. And I just wanted to make sure that distinction was being considered here today, because the, I believe that the preemption language, the language that we're concerned about at the state level that limits the degree that cities can take action, really all it restricts are laws or ordinances, not resolutions or policies or rules. And I have that language here. I think that legal staff obviously could address that much better than I could, but I think that is the, I think that is the distinction that maybe should be considered here. And my understanding is that a rule can be enforced the same as any other rule that parks may have. For instance, the Oklahoma City Skate Park is currently tobacco-free, according to the website, and when you call and ask, "What happens when you violate a rule of the park?" Not necessarily this one, just any rule of the park. Well, yes, the ramifications are that you can be asked to leave, and if the, what I was told is to just kind of ask, "How does it work? How do park rules work?" And I think that's a ramification that perhaps people should be aware of when we talk about enforcement, that while there wouldn't be a fine applied, there would be the potential of being asked to leave if you, just like, if you violate any rule. And so, I think that what's being asked for today is just passage of a resolution, kind of like a rule or a policy, not an ordinance, which is what's restricted at the state level, my understanding. Again, legal staff would want to clarify that.
Under this policy, we can ask them to refrain from smoking, but we really can't ask them, we can't eject them from the park, because then you're going to be arresting someone. Essentially, if you say, "Leave the park," and they don't leave the park, you have to arrest them. That's an arrest. So...
Oh, okay.
I didn't really want to get into the legalities of it, but really do need an official Attorney General's opinion to actually address a prior Attorney General's opinion in 1987 that appears to say that our regulations must mirror what the state law and the State Board of Health regulations are. Now, the current Attorney General can certainly change that opinion. He could, you know, clarify it, say, "Well, that's not really what it meant," or withdraw it, whatever, but you really need an official Attorney General's opinion to address that issue, and an opinion from an Assistant Attorney General is not the same thing as an opinion from the Attorney General. So the Attorney General is the elected state law officer, so you really need the official opinion.
Have we, have we asked for an official Attorney General's opinion from our present Attorney General?
We had considered it during the, when it was going through the Legislative Committee. Instead, they, I believe they opted for the legislation we got this year to allow smoke, prohibition of smoking outdoors in airports within certain distances of the entrances. However, I'm in the process of drafting something that could be submitted to the AG, so I'll have that in the near future, and Council can make a decision if they want to ask for the official opinion.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ed, you want to make your motion on, in the amendment?
I'll do it with the amendments.
Okay. Is this the resolution with the amendment, or do we vote on separately?
Just the amendments under item...
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment first. This is under 10D of the Council Agenda.
Your Honor?
Larry?
Okay. One of the amendments, then, is to strike this paragraph referencing Oklahoma law. Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
Yes, that's one of the...
And based on what Kenny just said, I think we ought to give serious consideration to leaving that in there, because what I got, what I heard him say is that there are some legal things out there, whether Lawton or Timbuctoo did it or not, is really not material. We could hang ourselves out if we start doing stuff or saying stuff that goes against state law until we get that Attorney General. Now, if you want to put some wording in here to request an Attorney General's opinion, that's one thing, but to strike this out, I think, would be very foolish.
At the risk of being very foolish, it doesn't mean anything. It means nothing. It has no substance to it at all. It's just a recitation of a view of the law. It doesn't have anything...
And I would point out on our resolution, if you look at the resolving clauses, you're declaring the park system tobacco-free, but any action to be taken is under the second resolving clause where you will, the Council requests that all employees, agents, and officials of the city, and all visitors and patrons of the park system refrain from using tobacco products in outdoor areas of the park system. And it's actually, it's already prohibited inside buildings or other facilities in the park system. That's actually totally prohibited. You can't do that, and we can enforce that legally. But this would just be your requesting that they refrain from it. So Wendell and I have discussed this, and our signs really should reflect, the outdoor signs should reflect that that's what we're actually doing. It's a request.
So you don't see any legal position that we might be putting ourselves in if we take this out?
No.
I retract my comment.
Ready to vote on the amendment? All right, cast your votes. The amendment passes. Ed, you want to make a motion now on item 10X? Or 8X? 8X. Okay.
Your Honor, I have a quick question. If we approve this, will the signage come back to this Council then to be approved?
Yeah, not the way this is drafted right now. You have directed the city manager through his Parks Department staff to develop the signage after seeking input from the public.
I'm sure the city manager will want to make sure the Council's comfortable.
I appreciate that.
All right. Cast your votes on 8X. That passes unanimously. Thank you all for your interest in that issue. Item 8Y, understand we do not need executive session on this item. So how about a motion on 8Y? And we're voting on item 8Y1 first. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And now, I need a motion on item 8Y2.
No action.
No action on item 812. Don't need a motion there. All right. Now, we're on item 8Z. Understand we do need executive session on this item.
Yes, a short one.
All right. How about a motion to move that to executive session? Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session unanimously. Item 8AA, I understand we do not need executive session. All right. How about a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, cast your votes. Item 8AB, do we need executive session? We do not. Okay? How about a motion then on item 8AB?
Strike the item.
Okay. Strike the item. Sounds good to me. We're on to item 8C. This is Claims Recommended for Denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8AC? Claims Recommended for Denial. All right. We have a motion. In a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Claims Recommended for Approval is item 9. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9 and Claims Recommended for Approval? Okay. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10A has been deferred until June 19th. Item 10B and C are from Councilman White. Pete?
The 10B has to do with a, with the notice requirements in rural areas. I ran into a situation recently where we followed the process as it existed and approved a skeet shooting range, and there were people not out, that were far outside the legal area, but that were close enough to be in... legal area, but that were close enough to be impacted by it. And, and this just expands that to get a larger base of people that would be notified in the, of the approval of lands in AA areas. I just, I wish that we, this would have been in place at that point. We might, or might not have approved that skeet shooting facility, but certainly the people would have, would have had input on the front side as opposed to the situation that's arisen since then.
Okay. You don't make a motion on 10B?
It's just, it's not just on for introduction. It'll be on two more times.
You're right.
So I just moved its introduction.
Okay. Motion and a second. Introduce item 10B. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Then item 10C. Pete?
Uh, this is just a further extension of the, of our intent, which we tried through the legislative process to, to get the legislature to permit us to regulate the smoking, tobacco use within the, within the city limits. It's just a resolution, or it doesn't have, we won't put up a sign or anything. It's just a resolution that says we would like that, we'd like to have smoking, have the control of the tobacco use within our city limits.
Okay.
You know, I can back up one, answer a question on B. B, how many times does this problem occur? Is it a frequent problem in the rural areas where we can't get enough...
Well, we spent 20 minutes on it just now, about parks.
No, I'm talking about your resolution on the notification thing. Is that...
Oh, on the first one?
Yeah.
Oh. It's not going to happen except in rural areas.
I know that, but is it happening frequently?
It doesn't happen very often. I, it does not happen very often, but I wish you'd come to the community meeting I had.
I've heard some of that comment at water sources.
And I think part of it was sincerely held frustration that they didn't know about it till it was done. And I, and I...
Well, you know, I think that's unfortunate, and your ordinance was to solve that issue, but I, I have a little bit uneasiness about adopting an ordinance to solve a single problem. It's already happened. Doesn't solve that problem at all. But anyway, I just, that's...
I, I understand. I do understand. And, well, it's, I, the reason I want to do it this way is I wanted everybody to take a look at it. I mean, if, if...
Well, I guess my question would be, how often will this go into effect? I mean, what percentage of, of typical zoning cases like this will be affected?
We might have, we might have five cases in a year, I would, this is a guess.
Okay.
We might have five cases in a year...
Okay.
That would, that additional notice would have to be given. And we might not have more than one, that it would make a difference in the ultimate result.
The, the five number was what I was looking for.
Right. And that's a guess on my part.
Right.
Is that, don't you think that's fair?
Okay.
But it is just a guess.
We're voting on, even though we've been talking about AB, we're voting on item 8C, uh, 10C. Pete, you want to make a motion there? This is the, the one on the state law resolution. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10D, we've already addressed, and item 10E is back with Councilman Shadid on the Fire Department and Medical Response.
This, this is just, this has been hammered out and agreed between the Fire Department, Emsa, the Medical Director, they're all in agreement. There's no opposition. This is just, once, and it's, it says specifically, "Once the CAD-to-CAD interface comes online, fire will no longer go on non-priority Level 3 calls." It's estimated to be about 12,000 calls a year, which should result in substantial cost savings to the city. I, I think that it will be a difference for citizens, and it's, to me, it's a policy, and therefore it requires resolution from the council. I think Pat probably disagrees.
I have a question. If everybody's agreeing to do it, why are we passing a resolution? It seems like, now, I don't mean it's a waste of time, but it's close. If, if, everybody's in agreement, if the city manager's in agreement, the Fire Department's in agreement, Emsa's in agreement, if we're going to do it, why have a resolution?
It's a, because it's a policy statement, and it's...
But it's, they're already doing it.
No, they're not doing it.
Well, they will as soon as the equipment's available. I mean, as I understood you to say, Ed, that this was agreed to by the Fire Department and Emsa and the Medical Director, everybody was...
I'm sorry, Pat. The protocols were agreed among the three of, of how they would do it if they were to no longer go on, what calls they would not go on and which calls they would go on. They agreed on the protocols.
So they haven't agreed to this...
Right. I mean, whether they, whether they no longer go is a policy statement from the council, and that's, that's the reason for the resolution.
Well, I, I'm concerned that the resolution is close, if not over the line, between policy and management. That's my only concern. And if we were already doing it, as I understood, I misunderstood what you said earlier. It may be valuable. I think the city manager and the Fire Department probably make that same call. They have the same concerns you do. But anyway, I...
Okay. You want to make a motion, Ed?
Uh, move it.
Do we have a second on 10E? All right. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. City manager reports?
Items from council.
Ah, items from council. Gary?
Nothing.
All right. Ed?
This is very quickly, I know this is long, but just on Thunder Alley, I think there's a lot of disappointment. People loved it, the sense of community. People are disappointed. I've, I've heard some people saying, you know, "You're capitulating to violence." They give an example of Tony Blair when he had the bombing in, in England. He was on the subway the very next day. I, I just want to get the message out that it's not just about the shooting that, that occurred in Bricktown. A, it was a decision by the Thunder, not by the city. B, there were real logistical issues. I understand they had to shut the escalator down because you were, you were pushing people down into a crowd and mass, and they couldn't, there was nowhere for them to go. If, if somebody had a health problem, there's no way you could have got an ambulance in there. I mean, there's a reason, again, if you're the only city doing something, you have to step back and ask, "Should we be the only one?" Or, "Why isn't every other city doing this?" But I did, a couple of nights before that, there was a group of probably 200 people sitting on, on the hillside, kind of, you get a satellite and you project it onto the wall. I, I, I do think there's real value in the sense of community. Not everybody can afford a ticket. There was great camaraderie, and you can tell that there's real sadness that, that we can't do that anymore. But I would encourage people to do it in smaller groups, maybe in your neighborhood. You can project it outside. You can sit as a group. You can have that sense of community, maybe not as a, a group of 8,000, but, but 100, 200, and you can still have that sense of community and still enjoy the game in that fashion. But I just wanted to get the message that it's not just capitulating to violence. There's some real logistical issues there as well.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. We, we've had some comments today about ODOT and how they design highways. I think it's time for somebody to take their case and to give them a praise report on a project that has been long in, in its working out, and that is the Single Point Urban Interchange at I-40 and Morgan Road. They opened that up about 30 days early. I had the opportunity to drive it last night. It is an extremely well-done project. They're going to add some landscaping, I believe, to it, but my hat's off to Gary Ridley and the ODOT people, as well as Triad Design, who did the design work on accomplishing a very positive project to resolve a problem that I think will add to the quality of life of the people that live in southwestern Oklahoma City. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Pete? All right. I have an announcement to make. I have a grandfather, once again. My youngest son Tristan has provided us with another daughter. This is Fern Elizabeth Cornett, and she was born on Sunday. Thank you. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, too, would like to just make a quick comment on Thunder Alley. You know, I'm, I'm disappointed that it had to come to an end like it did, because I know, growing up, that's the only way our family could have participated in anything like that. I know a lot of people enjoyed the process, but I do want to say, I think, and hopefully everyone would agree, that the safety of individuals is far more important than entertainment that people may obtain with respect to attending that Thunder Alley activity. And as a result of what happened last Monday evening, reports have been coming out, whether or not they're true, I'm not sure, but, that indicate that there had been problems there prior to last Monday night. There had been fights that have occurred. And as Councilman Shadid mentions, when you have so many large people in such a small area, that can present problem. And again, I think we here on the council are more concerned with public safety and the safety of all individuals. And hopefully, they can come up with a alternative, whether it's going into the Cox Center or maybe at the Bricktown Sugar Shaw Ballpark, you know, to be able to show big screen viewings of the future games. And I hope they keep playing all the way to the finals. But again, it's, it's disappointing that this has occurred, and apparently didn't have anything to do directly with the basketball game. But the way the media, I was up in Washington DC, the first thing that comes on the air the following morning after they announced the score is the fact that eight people were shot. And it was just so disappointing, after all the work, that everybody in Oklahoma City had participated in in bringing an NBA team here. And now that we're getting the type of recognition that we are, that it is clouded by those types of events. So I just want to say that public safety and the safety of individuals, I think, is far more important than an entertainment-type activity. Thank you.
Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I just want to congratulate everybody involved in the Paseo Arts Festival. It was a fantastic weekend. I was there yesterday afternoon late, and even as things were closing down, there were big crowds of people, great food, wonderful art, not too much confusion about who was what, and I, I thought it all went very well. So hats off.
All right. Skip?
Yes, Mayor, and I've mentioned this to the city manager, and I've asked staff, we have some parts of, of, of our city, and especially in the northern part of Ward 7, there is a, an addition that was formerly, I think, platted out as College Park, and it's now referred to as Chisholm Creek Edition. And there are streets that just don't go through. And you have from probably Harvey up to Ali, and north of Hefner, you have streets that are literally cut off. And we have some streets at 114th and 115th off of Chertel, in which we have braided, at least gravelled, but there is absolutely no pavement, there is no curb. And it just looks, it looks shoddy. It, it's very shabby for a neighborhood that has sustained the conditions of the area over the last 20, 20, 20, 30 years. And yet and still, you have areas where we have allowed it, the, the streets just to just be totally neglected to the point where there are some homeowners that have actually fenced in part of the easements, that are actually streets, our streets, that is now part of their yard. And, and I just think that we need to address that issue, and we're talking about some of this resurfacing. This is an issue, I think, that's a very serious public, public safety concern, because if you get an address and you turn off of Hefner Road and go into the north, and you running into either fenced-in parts of the street, or just no street at all. And, and it's got a sign there. And each one of these areas is in the heart of a very well-established neighborhood association, and I'm going to say, a, a community and neighborhood. And I just would like to see if we can get staff. I've asked, I've, I've had one of, one of Public Works individuals to, to meet me up there. We drove around the area to look at the pothole and the street conditions, and I pointed this out. You know, it, it sounds like that there, at, at a time when a developer was allowed it to go in and develop this area, we let him, let somebody get away without doing the job that they were supposed to do as far as fully put, you know, in developing the streets. And, and I just would like to, and I, I don't want to, to belabor this issue, but I, I think that, you know, the statements that has been made in reference to the unfortunate issue that happened a week ago in Oklahoma City. But I think there's a bigger issue that, you know, and I've asked the mayor to give me some time to, to talk to him, and there's community leaders that are very concerned about the issue. But the one question that nobody has tended to, to, to rise, to raise in reference to this issue is bigger than the Thunder, it's bigger than, than a whole lot of the crowds, but it is, where do 15, 16, 16 and 19-year-old kids run the streets of our city with handguns? And that's the violence, I think, that we need to start talking about on a much global community base, from, from every degree of enforcement that we can reach out to, to, to start looking at that issue. And so that's my comments, and thank you very much.
Okay. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. A question was asked me the other night. I don't have the answer to it. Do residential driveways require a revocable permit when they come in from the street easement? Is it private property? You don't have to answer it now, but I have a question. And the second is...
The answer's no.
They don't?
They don't.
Okay, so why not?
Uh, I don't know why not. They don't, we've never required us.
That's okay. Okay. I didn't want to belabor the point.
It's a, it's a private property owner use of, of his property that's not necessarily inconsistent with the, the use of the right-of-way. Plus, it, they can use their property, like they, you know, like now they'll place mailboxes in the right-of-way and also sprinkler systems, et cetera, although we do require a revocable for sprinkler systems. But with just a driveway, that's not viewed as inconsistent with just a sidewalk, because normally that part of it's going to be used as a sidewalk.
Thank, thank you.
You don't, you don't need a revocable for the driveway, but you've got to get a permit to put a driveway in.
Yes.
Now, that's, that's a little different, but that's a good point. The second thing, we approved several projects this morning that provided for sole-source software vendors that supports the city's software operations. And there, there's some pretty big numbers in there. And I wonder if we've ever made a, a study or looked at what it would cost the city to bring on some programmers to design those programs so we wouldn't have to have these major expenses. Just a comp, question.